There we go. All right, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 12th, 2023. We are recording and broadcasting on WHCA. And if you could, please join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its fellow citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well.
So as we start every meeting, public comments? Is anyone here for public comments? Yes, good for now. If you want to, yes, feel free, please.
Hi, I'm Marion Lyons. I actually have two.
And can you give us just your street and?
Oh, sure. Nine Grove Way, obviously in Whitman.
Thank you.
I have two at DeVal and one at the middle school, but my middle school or we going to high school and my, one of my DeVal's would go to middle school. So next year I'll have three kids in three separate schools. So I really came, one, because, you know, I was so hoping that we could do more for the schools and the budget would get approved, but I also looked at the school length and I'll be honest, I've been in this district for so long and had no idea of the differences among the schools. I also was a little concerned with the bus time, so that's why I thought maybe I should stop by and listen. As a DeVal parent, we already get out really late, so moving it later is a bit of a concern for me. So I thought I would just come listen and share my opinion if, if it mattered to anyone. So I just thought I would let you know. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Okay. So the next item on the agenda was the meeting minutes approval, but we actually did the March 1st meeting minutes last meeting, so we don't have any meeting minutes for this time. So we can move right into the superintendent's report.
I'll be here on time someday. Hi Glenn.
Hey.
Thank you. So first, hopefully, this is hopefully the easiest thing that we're going to do tonight. I am a board member for the South Shore Education Collaborative. I sit on that board as a superintendent. Every year I have to be voted in by the school committee to be a voting member of the board. So I'm just looking for a motion to reappoint me as a voting member to the South Shore Education Collaborative.
So move.
Second. Jen, you got that?
That was me.
Sure. Any discussion on that one? And Fred, you're still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
So we're going to do a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Fred.
Yeah.
Beth.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yes.
unanimous.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is distribution of the evaluation tool for the superintendent. So I believe in your Google Drive, you have the evaluation tool. What I would like to do is set a date for it to be due and then reviewed. So my recommendation to the committee is to have it due by the 19th to Jen. We have a reorg meeting on the 22nd and the new chair, whomever that is, can meet with Jen to get the evaluations, put them together for our meeting on June 7th.
So that was May?
May 19th.
May 19th, correct. I'm sorry, did I not say that?
No, you just said the 19th.
19th. So you want them due on May 19th?
Yes.
Okay.
That gives you a month and I'm very open to meet with anybody as they go through the tool to explain anything, to go through the process. If you have any questions, just meet with me. But I'd like them due to Jen and again, the vote, the election is Saturday, the reorg is Monday, and then the new chair can meet with Jen and put the evaluation together.
So the only thing I would suggest to the committee, if you're okay with it, is maybe copying Chris as the vice chair on those. In the past, I've sometimes done some gentle reminders of, hey, don't have your evaluation. Jen can certainly do that, but sometimes that might put her in a different position. So it's whatever the committee wants to do. It might just be helpful to have Chris get those, just so, again, or you can even just follow up with Jen, maybe that's an easier way of just reach out a week before and Jen can help and Chris can help, because it would just be weird for Jeff to start calling all of the people, like, hey, have you done my evaluations? Good.
Okay, next on the agenda is school choice numbers for 23, 24. As we know, the school committee approved school choice for next year K to 10. And I have some numbers and I do believe I put those in the packet, but I just need your approval for these numbers. Looking at high school, grade nine, 20, grade 10, 20. At Hanson Middle School, grade five, 5, grade eight, 10. Whitman Middle School, grade six, 5, and grade seven, 5. Right now, due to the instability of our budget, I'm cautious to put any numbers K to 5 or K to 4, where I know that class size, especially at the elementaries, might vary if we do have to modify what we've approved already. So those are the numbers that the principals are comfortable with. We met this morning. I don't believe we're going to fail, but I think it's an opportunity to put it out there and see what, who might want to come to Whitman Hanson.
So these numbers are the, I see in school choice recommendations, are you saying that those are available spots?
Those will be available spots as of June, well, as of, once it's approved here, we will put out an application and those applications will be due June 1st.
Do you have any interest, do you have any applications already?
We've had six phone calls last week and I had Siobhan, they were primarily to the high school, and I had Siobhan say, I don't know until this week.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
A quick question, Jeff. In fact, in the following years, you know, for what we're bringing up from five, eight, six, and seven from the various middle schools, has that been accounted for and would we have to run?
Yes.
In nine percent.
Yes. We are in good shape with room. That's why I'm hesitant around the elementaries, because we're pretty locked in with our numbers there. Middle school has more flexibility and high school has more flexibility due to the schedule and students switching classes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we can accommodate who we're being into this.
And we can change the numbers next year for admittance. If we do get all these students, we might not admit 20 sophomores next year if we do decide to keep choice open. Sophomore class might be locked, because we already have had 20 freshmen moving into sophomore year. So we'll look at those numbers next year as we come across school choice in 24.
Thank you.
Just need a motion to accept those numbers.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to accept the numbers as presented. So move.
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
So fifth grade though Hanson Middle School, you have spots. How is that different from the fifth grade at, like, how is that not the same as fifth grade at Conley and DeVal?
The, there's, the fifth grade at Hanson has a lower class size right now than Conley and DeVal.
Okay.
Okay. This motion, can we just clarify, it's a recommendation, because if by chance in June you have a fair amount of move-ins, then you may not have this space, right? So it's going to constantly be evaluated?
We can't, if we have a significant amount of move-ins by June 1st.
Or July or August.
Well, we have to determine to the state by June 1st.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have to certify by June 1st.
There's a cutoff date?
Yes, there is. In fact, randomly today, the state sent the survey saying, no, you have to tell us by June 1st what you're doing, whether you're not open or you're open to how many seats.
So would these be like maximum numbers?
These are maximum.
Okay, so maybe we can clarify to say up to?
Yep.
Up to, and everyone has the numbers? Do you want to run, everyone have those numbers? You want to run? Everyone's got?
I just think it's, although this is called school choice, this is actually district choice. So I think people listening, people hearing that, because if you want to have a fifth grader come in for school choice, the, it's designated at a certain building. So I just think we need to be aware, people need to be aware, that the choice in grade six, five, six, seven, and eight is dependent upon the space at the building in the town where there's space. So it's not, now phone calls saying, I really want my kid to go to Whitman, because I'm right in Brockton, or I really want my kid to go to Hanson, because I'm right in Pembroke. You know what I mean? So I think we just want to make sure that we're aware that it's locked into the schools that we have space at.
Okay. Everyone's good with what we're voting on? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris? Beth?
Yes.
And Fred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving right along, George, if you can play Van up there a little bit. Up on the, on the board is a presentation on school day length.
Do we need to vote the social collaborative board?
We did. And we do that, first one.
Yeah, it was 10-0, I think.
Yes.
At least I jot it down, 10-0. Okay.
So up on the board is, is the school length day. I want to thank Darlene Foley and a list of pastors who helped put this together with George, myself, and our team. We've been looking at school start times for the, for almost a full year now. It's been an issue since 2012 around start time. October of last year, we, we had word that there were some issues around length of school day and equity of length of school day within the fifth grade in Whitman and Hanson. So in this presentation, in the school committee received last Thursday night, but for the public, we did some pros and cons and some, some information for you in the gallery and for the school committee to make a, to make a decision on where we go with, with school day length in the future. So benefits of a six-hour school day. Massachusetts Expanded Learning Time Report. Increased student engagement. Students and staff establish more meaningful relationships. A balance between academics and enrichment. Increased teacher collaboration. Because of the impact of time spent learning for students is mediated by the quality of the instruction they receive during that time. More successful schools do not simply provide more classroom time, but also strive for that, to make that classroom time as efficacious as possible. Increase in time for recess and transition. Increase in time for social, emotional health for students. Pitfalls of a six and a half hour day. Longer school days can result in attention deficit and fatigue, making the extra class time ineffective. Reports show that more time spent in school does not equate directly to higher test scores or assessment scores. Children will be traveling home later in the evening. Reduces the opportunity for extracurricular activities. DESI guidelines, pretty specific. This is what DESI says we have to do and we meet the minimum standard. And it had been brought up, is it the minimum? We meet the minimum standard in both our elementary schools and our middle schools and our high schools. District data. Hanson Middle School data, the six and a half hour day does not show any benefit in either academic achievement or social, emotional health. The grade five reading math diagnostic data is not a significant factor. George, I don't know if you or Nicky want to speak to the SEL student data?
Sure, so, okay, right away. But what you basically have in front of you is that this was the data that we took when we, when we surveyed our students. And when you look at this, the fifth grade, it talks about sense of belonging, happiness. It goes to all the categories and the questions that were asked. And when we really look at this, HMS grade five, Conley fifth grade, or Duval fifth grade does not show significant variances based just on a child goes to school longer. So we look at, do I have an adult that I can connect with you? I feel happy, do my teachers care for me? Do students behave? All of the different questions. So we pulled the data by grade for this and it basically shows that there is no significant trend in how students feel about going to a school or going to that school longer based on the survey that we did for them.
Thanks.
All right, go to the next slide. Right button. This is reading. When you look at the fifth grade reading scores between Conley, HMS, and Duval, first I want to say that there is no significant factor that happens that HMS students score higher because they're in school longer. If you analyze the data and if you remember back, we did grade level comparisons. And I want to say to you is that this is not something we do for grades. This is not something that we share that's really a topic discussion. But it's brought because of this, that Conley, HMS, and Duval, they share or they're equal in what's taking place per grade level and it doesn't seem to have a significant factor with longer time for grade five. That is in reading. If you look at it, for math, it is the same. Again, if you look at how we try to push kids to green, green is on grade level and above grade level. This does not seem to be a significant factor when you're looking at the difference between a grade, a grade, a school grade, another school grade, and a third school grade. So it's not a significant factor. Our staffs don't have this information, because since Jeff and I have been here, we've tried not to pick a grade versus school versus grade versus school versus grade versus school, because when I was a principal, that was done too. And it didn't really make positive relations, even though on the rare chance that we could beat the other school I was in. One school always had like a gold yellow star. So we tried out, just do grade levels and grade levels and grade levels across the district so we know. But there's no real significant factor in academic achievement for Whitman Hanson in the two time. Turn it back over to superintendent.
Yeah, just looking at local trends, Whitman Hanson is one of two local districts with a six-hour day. Our neighbor in Abington next door is the other. When considering the surrounding towns, the median length of day is six hours 15 minutes. Average length of day is six hours 19 minutes. Five Plymouth County districts are six hours 30 minutes. Four county districts are six hours 45. And I know Marshfield's a six hour 45 one. State average is six hours and 45 minutes if we look across the Commonwealth. National trends in 50 state, in a 50 state comparison on school day length, it was found that there's only one statewide policy in the country that requires their school day to be over six. Eight statewide policies require elementary schools to go six. Not all states require statewide policies. Some states allow for community level decisions. In Massachusetts, it's not hours, it's hours of the year. Again, 990 for middle and high and 900 hours for elementary schools, from DESI. Quality over quantity. Ultimately, the research on the length of school day comes down to the idea that the physical time spent in the school matters less than how the time is broken down. More time does not equate to more learning. Question came up, it actually was asked again, thank you from the parent and the community, how will the time be used? The additional time will be, will add flexibility to the current schedule to allow opportunities for smoother transitions instead of hurry up and move, independent time and social, emotional growth. We don't foresee an additional 20, 30 minutes adding to behaviors. Schools keep a log, in fact, regarding negative student behaviors, which vary depending at the age of the student, situations, individual needs of the student. Now, was a question that came up about behavior. Question came out about extracurricular activities. Per the Unit A contract, which is WHCA teacher's contract, elementary schools offer student council. Non-contractual opportunities are self-funded, usually by the students, not necessarily the PTO. It's fee-based and depend on teacher availability. Per the Unit A contract, middle schools offer four extracurriculars. At Hanson Middle School, it's yearbook, chorus, student council, and the builders club. At Whitman Middle, it's the yearbook, chorus, students for a cause, which is their student council, and Renaissance. Non-contractual opportunities are self-funded or fee-based and are dependent upon the availability of coaches and transportation. Activities at the middle school include cross-country, spring track, and basketball. We have found extracurriculars along like field trips this year. Availability of transportation has been, has been a challenge at best and the availability of coaches or teachers to want or be able to actually coach or do extracurriculars. Elementary field trips, another question that has come up recently. At each elementary school celebrates the grade transition to the next building, including supporting children with those with transition. So at Hanson Middle School, it's grade eight to nine. At Indian Head, it's grade four to five. At Duval and Conley, it's grade five to six. So it's not going to be the same just because we have a grade four and two grade fives, we have two different transition times. There is no fifth grade transition in the middle school at Hanson to move upstairs. So field trips include many factors, including the availability of transportation, which I just said, and field trips in any year, vary year to year at the building. The other piece that we've had issues with with field trips are booking field trips, because people post-COVID are booking years out. I believe Conley got Foxborough and they tried to book two years ago. They're able to go this year at the fourth or fifth grade level. For schools with a PTO are packed, they play a role in planning field trips and enrichment activities usually through funding. So it was asked to come up with an option that added nothing to the budget. So we came up with a no-cost option, which was shared to the public, to the staff, to the school committee. This is the option we've presented. A high school move, a start time of a 15-minute later day, 7:20 to 1:55. Their length of day is 6:35. That gets them to 9:90. A little bit more, probably 10:02 is the high school 9:90 time. Middle school's 8 to 2:30, 6:30, it stays the same, except the 15-minute bump. Conley's an 8:40 to 3, a 6:20 day. Duval is 9:15 to 3:35, a 6:20 day. And Indian Head is 8:55 to 3:15, or a 6:20 day. We are looking at busing and elementary routes can be shortened if we change the walk stop currently in our guideline, which we can modify, is .75 miles to, that's, how long you have to, what's that?
That's for group.
We're trying to do a group stop, I'm sorry. So we're trying to do more group stops, which will shorten the bus ride for our lengthier bus rides. The goal is to not have anybody, even if it's a later school, not be dropped off past 4 o'clock. The district alignment for PD, what we had talked about earlier on, aligning the three, three elementary schools is not, we don't have the availability to do it in this presentation and this is also subject to collective bargaining by the association. So my recommendation, and I'm going to come right out of the gate and make the recommendation, is not to do this for the school year 23, 24. And I'll give you two solid, two reasons why. One is with the superintendent hat on and one is as a parent, because I went home to talk to the boss about this a little bit and say, if I'm a parent and in Pembroke, we did this this year, and my two kids were in elementary school, we would have to modify our daycare and we might not be able to do that. So my wife said she would be more than upset a little bit and be coming to the next school committee meeting to say, why did you make a rash decision in April? Now, as a superintendent, I think this is a viable plan for our students. I think it's a good option for us. I think it increases time for our students at the elementary level to, to be comparatively with all our, our schools in the area. And that doesn't mean that we're doing strictly academic time. I think time with teachers is very important for our kids at the elementary level and they will have face time with their elementaries. But I also, as a superintendent, have caution, because my association are those parents that are teachers here but have kids at home and will have to modify their days for next year. So I would recommend moving this option as a solid option for the school year, well, it's 24, 25, next September, with the ability to give me an opportunity to speak to the association next fall and have coffee hours or open houses with the elementary parents to discuss their feelings towards this, because I know there's some animosity or anxiousness about the length of the day and the bus rides home. I think if we modify our bus routes now and we can shrink those, those travel times with our current schedule, parents will be less anxious about their 55 or 45 minute ride home from our later schools or these later, later end times. I'm open to questions for this and your thoughts on, on what we do.
Steve?
Yeah?
I got Steve, Beth, and then you, Fred.
So I think, thank you for, for all that, Jeff. I think what we've heard from parents is it's a lot. It's a lot to do in a short time, but it's also a lot to do if for the kids' schedules. Before-school, after-school activities, I don't know if it's really before-school that, that much, but the activity thing seems to coincide with doing this and having to ease in it with, I like the six hours 20 minutes. It's almost like easing into it a little bit, more than just the six hours 30 minutes. But that's kind of what I'm here, just wanted to bring that up.
Sure. Thank you. Fred?
So I'm going to put on my old hat as a union person, former union person. If you came to me the week before April vacation and wanted to negotiate about this and being parents, I didn't have, my kids were older when I was teaching, but being, having so many teachers who have young children and have daycare, I don't think it would get passed this year. And that's my personal opinion. I think it'd be a hard go, because there's not a lot of time left to have the people meet, negotiate, and then ratify or not ratify. So, you know, I know, you know, when you look back at any of the contracts, not that this is a contract itself, but the time it takes to have the meetings, to have the discussions, to have the union discussion, discuss it with their folks and then have a vote, you're talking about June and that's way too late. So, that's my.
Got it. Fred?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, it's way, there's just not enough time to make this proper informed decision, number one. Number two, one question I did have is, does the group stop, does that include kindergartners as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know, three quarters of a mile, you know, coming out of Duval at 4 o'clock in the afternoon or to be dropped off more toward 4 o'clock in the wintertime when it's dark out, you know, for that, you know, kindergarten, is a little bit scary. I know the feedback that we've heard from elementary parents, you know, it's pretty much been all that they're not too crazy about this idea and where it doesn't address all of our needs. You know, I think it's time to maybe put on the brakes a little bit. That being said, if we were going to do anything, I would like to see us at very least, you know, be able to have a plan in place by next January, that we could have public forums, have public meetings prior, make sure the public and the parents are on board. And is there any issue with starting this halfway through the three-year? That we started in January of 25 seconds, as opposed to waiting until September of 25?
I think that would be challenging, especially if people have to modify their plans after school. So if we ended up moving, I'm just going to say Duval, and I have, I have boys and girls that are in after-school activities that, that start at 4:15 and we move the end of the school day up, we're at 4, I'm getting a 4, you know, that would be problematic as they have already committed to that activity for the year. And I take dance or basketball or something like that. So starting at mid-year, although a possibility probably isn't a probability.
Okay, I would think that a minimum of a year, if parents are on board, so that they can get childcare and other things arranged. So, I mean, I would be, we're putting on the brakes until we can come up with a plan and, you know, announcing to the public if we went forward, that it would not be any sooner than September of 25.
24.
September of 24.
September 24. You gave, gave another year out. It's one step closer to the top.
I've got that by 25 in the brain, I apologize, Jeff.
Okay, it's okay. Michelle? Fred, you good?
Not very good, thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
Thank you for this, Jeff, and I appreciate you saying that you agree. It does need the time to sort of marinate with everybody, so for 24. And you recognized that there are a lot of concerns from the parents. You recognize the emails that came in, the teachers. There's a lot that still has to be discussed, has to be worked through. So I just want to say thank you for saying, we, like Beth said, I think it takes a lot of time, a lot of things need to be talked about, you have to listen to the concerns, if it is even in fact the right decision for the students to add time. So there's a lot that has to be discussed. So thank you for not trying to push it through for September. I think we need to talk about it for the following year. So I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Don?
Sure. I want to first acknowledge Riley and Noah, who came to our last meeting and spoke in regards to the high school time. And they were thoughtful and mature and professional in their presentation over the benefits of a later high school time, specifically for the high school. They also made a presentation for middle school and elementaries. It was fairly compelling. They did a large amount of research on their own personal time in a short amount of time. And I think we owe it to those student representatives and all the other students who have spoken out, asking for help. They're asking for our help, because they are in crisis and, and we can't ignore that. There are high school students on medication, they are depressed, they are anxious, they are sleep deprived. And I'm looking at a no-cost option to give them 15 more minutes. That's what I'm looking at. I came into this meeting after looking at this presentation and thinking, we've got two separate decisions to make and potentially one vote that I truly thought was going to happen. And I was going to recommend two separate votes, because these are two very separate But here we are, hearing that more time is needed, when this topic was started last summer. It was started, and it was also brought up in October. So there was time all year to get to where we are and make a decision even prior to today. And I think that there is still time for parents to make adjustments. And I'm not even sure what the childcare need would be, because we're actually providing a longer school day by 15 minutes. Let's not mistake the amount of time we're changing to Conley, Duval, and Indian Head. It is 15 minutes that's being added to the day. So I don't, I would like to hear from parents if they have a childcare issue, 15-minute difference. I'd also, I do agree with Ms. Lyons, who made a public comment that extending the Duval day is not what's in students' best interest, because the burden is being put on that one particular group. And I recall hearing in a prior meeting that two elementary schools in Whitman were supposed to rotate back and forth. So perhaps if there's something that needs to be bargained, that can be discussed. Because if we're going to continue with this time schedule on these elementary schools, it is not fair to put one section, population of students, at a disadvantage, going the latest, where we heard feedback from student reps speaking to these elementary kids, that they're waiting in the morning to go to school. So that I have information that I would like to hear more on that possibility. Just going back, I also have follow-up on the data from the slides of four. And I'm hearing this, there's more time does not equal more learning. However, we need to consider not just the average of these charts that we're seeing that smoothed out for all the population, because there are some students on IEPs that have special needs, that more time may not equal more learning to them, but the more time eases transitions. And we saw that in the slide, too, it can help ease transition. So I think that's a benefit that we're missing, that some kids are in need of. I guess my last question at this point is, if our contracts are for seven hours, what exactly needs to be bargained for this?
Can I answer that right now?
Yeah.
So what has to be bargained is, in the contract, the start and finish time of each school is already in the contract. So anything, if you adjust in the contract, has to be bargained. So if we change the time of each school, that has to be impact bargained with the association.
The school day, however, staff is already in the building for seven hours, because they're...
I understand that, but it's in the contract as written as the start of the high school is 7:05. So we have to change the contract, so it's an impact bargain.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
I think the childcare was in reference to staff, because, like, my kids are, I have a first grader, so I'm just out of daycare, and you sign up for daycare in March. So if I'm a teacher, I'm going to put my teacher hat on for a second, if I'm a teacher, kind of like what Beth was saying, and my administration is telling me in April, two days before April vacation, that my school time is going to change. Sorry if you had other plans. That's a really great way to ruin a relationship with administration and your teachers' union. Three of these times on here end, so the high school, the middle school, and Duval. The 1:55, the 2:30, and the 3:35 end times are the end times on the teacher's contract. So, yeah, maybe it doesn't have to be impact bargained, but we're really going to have Duval teachers walk out with the kids at 3:35? That's impractical and not reasonable. The times for the elementary schools are too late for them to be getting home. I think that Noah and Riley did an excellent job, and I just saw on Twitter that they're going to MIT and Yale, so they have done excellent for themselves, despite the 7:05 wake-up time.
Absolutely.
They have done excellent. And I will say, my fourth grader was one of the kids they talked to, and if I asked him what he wanted for dinner every night, he would say pizza, right? I think that that's part of the, totally, right? I think there's a lot that we have to, we have to, like, you know, anecdotal information is anecdotal information. And that's not dismissing anything that Noah and Riley did at all. Please don't, you know, think that. But I think when we're looking at changing times for the district, I appreciate the superintendent telling us that this is not perfect, and we're never going to please everybody, but, anecdotally, Whitman Hands and Youth Soccer is really, really big, really popular to spring season. I coached two teams. We practice at 4:00, we practice at 4:30. At Duval right now, their dismissal time, what's Duval's dismissal time currently, 3:15?
Yes.
The buses are not there to pick up the kids until 3:35. There's a 20-minute gap because of the time, right? And so now we're pushing that. Adding on at Indian Head, the longest bus ride is 41 minutes at Indian Head, 41 minutes. So what, are we going to have kindergartners do an eight-hour day from the time they hop on the bus to the time they get off the bus? That's not okay. I understand that the high school students need a later start time, but it can't come at the expense of our youngest students. And we can't dismiss our staff, I'm sorry. Like, I'm a teacher, I'm going to put that hat on. Like, you can't just make this and be like, "Too bad, you'll have to figure it out." That is not what we should be doing as a school committee at all. So I think that, looking, one recommendation I would have for the superintendent would be to perhaps, and I think we had a public comment one time say this, too, roll it out, like, could we do incrementals? Could we do it over a two-year period? For the first year, we're adding 10 minutes onto everybody's day, or 15 minutes, if we want to get to that six-and-a-half-hour day. Because also, like, wasn't the point to make the fifth grade at Conley and Duval the same as Hanson Middle, and it doesn't here, right? So like, that's, that to me is like, this is, that's an issue that I have. But if we did it 15 minutes one year, 15 minutes the next year, or did it over three years, 10, 10, 10, like, and then that way you gave people an opportunity to adjust, you gave an opportunity for the students to adjust, for the teachers to adjust. I don't know if that's feasible, that would be a recommendation that I would have. And then that way, you know, it can roll it out and be easy. I think just, you know, adding it on. I mean, I have a first grader who still falls asleep twice a week on the couch, you know, like, after school. Like, it's a long day for these kids, it's a long day, so.
George?
I just think that, I think what we need to also figure, remember, is that this is a no-cost option. So, Dawn, when you mentioned the two pieces, like, the two separate questions, we wrestled with that, and I tried to figure that out. Could you still go at 7:20 at the high school and let the other elementary still get out at the same time? And there isn't a no-cost option to do that because of the drop-off and pickup times in between school on the afternoon run. So that's why that is. When we talk about extending the time, the only way to do it was with a gang stop or a bus, a group bus stop, so that we wouldn't have to go into a cul-de-sac and pick everyone up, which costs more time. So we tried to do it with, can we shorten this to make sure everybody's home at 4:00? Can we still then have a no-cost option, and can we try to gain something? So this is like the out-of-the-compromise, if you would. And I do want to remind everyone that, from a district perspective only, and I'm not the superintendent, but from a district perspective only, the district went into this hoping for the alignment of three elementary schools so that we could help our staff to meet more, we could help with professional development, we could help with the things that they also need, and that didn't happen. So I'm not, you all have a tough job to figure this out. I just want to let you know that the key in this was a no-cost option.
So I guess just one, yeah, hang on, Fred, before we go around two. The, so quick, so observation, right? I think the hard part is where everyone's trying to figure out what's best for the entire community. Right, so that's the hard part. Because you can pick, like, a group and try and do what's best for them, but there's, chances are, there's impacts on it. So I think, you know, I'm hoping and trusting, right? Like, when you say, like, this is the best thing, considering the entire community, that's, again, kind of what we're after. The one question I guess I would have is, because we started to kind of go down this path of timing's important, which I agree, right? You need to let parents understand, and teachers, and the people that work here, all that. So what does that time look like from a, at a minimum standpoint? But, because that's going to be really important, because as, as we move forward, you're going to need a, like, if we're saying, "Hey, we got to let everyone know in, I don't know, January, if it's going to happen in September," then that is really important, because then if you don't let them know in January, then you're going to be right back here again in April saying, like, "Hey, we don't do that." So what is, like, do you have a sense of, like, at a minimum, this decision would be, have to be communicated to everyone so that they can make those arrangements? Like, what is that minimum?
So that minimum is one, once, if the committee decides this is the option you want to go with, I start with the association, with the impact bargain of that, and then the parent outreach, saying that this is what we're going to do. So as soon as the association comes up with that, "Okay, we can work with that," then it's set in stone. That could be October, that could be November, but the deadline really has to be January. You have to give people six months before school starts. Usually, if, in looking at, I'm talking to another superintendent who pushed this issue forward and was voted down. He was looking at a six-and-a-half-hour day in Billerica, and it was shot down. He had multiple areas where he actually had to hire teachers from a six-and-a-half-hour day to a seven-hour day. But when the school calendar comes out, that's when everybody is notified officially. But unofficially, you can say, "This, we are doing this going into next school year." If that's where we are, really, the impasse is having these conversations with parents, and then having parents, if this is something the community rises up and says, "We definitely don't want it, because we want a later start, or we want a six-hour day," that puts us back to the drawing board of two separate issues, and what do we figure out? But if this is the option, and I think this is the best no-cost option. Again, we presented a cost option, saying we could use $216,000, bring in three more buses. We align our three elementaries, we tag on that 20 more minutes, we have a later start, and we can go. And in our times, the Duval school or the late school isn't leaving at 3:35. So I'm looking for, this is how you, you want us to proceed. We will put that in motion, and with the goal of opening up with this in September of '24, having an impact bargain by the first of the year, January 1st, 2024.
So, all right, so, and I appreciate all the context that you gave as well, but you're basically saying January is the key, it has to be done by January, and one of the things that's going to happen is you are going to make some transportation-related changes. So seeing how that shakes out may change things, because you may be able to say, "Hey, we could change..."
We could shave off time here and there.
Okay, thank you. I got, yeah, hang on one second. Glenn, I got a bunch of committee members. Glenn, no, no, Glenn's next.
Okay. So, basically, we can do this all back and forth, which we've been doing for a long time, but it seems to me that it's the teachers' union who's going to make this final decision. Is that correct?
Well, more likely than not.
Are they just going to agree with whatever we do?
We have a good relationship.
Okay.
We'll get through with that, we have a good relationship.
So you do think they'll follow through with whatever we do?
I believe...
Whatever we want to do.
I just, I think saying that is a, I think now you're putting the onus on the teachers, and I think that's problematic.
I don't want to do that, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and I think that that's problematic, to be like, "We decided this, but they don't want to do it."
And I want to finish.
Hang on, yeah, hang on.
Half we put field is out to them, and they should be involved in this. Yes.
Yeah, we've had the conversation.
They play the biggest role in the decision.
I think if teachers know ahead of time that this is on the docket, the relationship that we have with the leadership of that, we will come up with a solution.
And five months would not be enough for them.
By January.
No way, right?
Right now, it's not.
If we say, "This is what we want to do in September," they're probably going to say, "No, thank you."
Correct.
Okay.
That's my strong feeling.
So our choice is really limited to next year.
I think you might have, Fred?
So I want to give everyone an opportunity, so I got Fred, and I got Dawn and then Fred, but I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak first before we go around two. So, and then I got David, actually, before that. So Chris, and then David. Chris?
Okay. Yeah, just kind of picking up where Hillary left off on the staggered scenario, you know. I understand and appreciate the fact this is a no-cost option, and that's kind of the parameters that we kind of steered you in that direction, right? And, but, I'm hearing, you know, that it's, the timing of this isn't going to work next year. I recognize that, I understand that for a multitude of reasons. That being said, if we're going to push it off and implement this possibly the following year, could we consider some type of formula or plan that staggers the, maybe some additional cost and the impact that has on families planning their debt, you know, or daycare or whatever? I just don't want to, I mean, we have spent a lot of time on this, and it deserves the time we spent on it. But here we are, and, you know, the best decision, you know, the best thing we can do now is think about how to get this to work in the future. So that's kind of what I'm pushing about, proposing.
Two things that came out of these discussions is a five-year rollout to get to where we really want to be, which is almost an 8 o'clock start at the high school, with schools similar. So I believe it came from the public at one point. Chris, you had said, "Come up with a plan," and then the committee said, "Come up with a no-cost plan." You know, if you open up the pocketbook a little bit, it gives us some more flexibility as far as a rollout, as far as an extension. If it's, if we have the ability to spend some more money, we can make some things happen.
Considering how things are and have been, with, you know, budget implications, I think this, if we were to roll it out over time and lessen the immediate impact, I think that's kind of where I'm coming at.
David?
So, a couple of questions. My first question is, are you looking into implementing a no-cost option for the start of 2024? Or was that just for this particular approach because of the short time period and the fiscal implications?
So this is the plan, if the committee wants us to move forward with something, my recommendation is using this as the template, almost to start, and then taking feedback as we roll into the summer and saying, "Hey, look, if you say, you know, you can spend some money, this might be that piece of it." Remember, the original goal, when I presented the options, was to align those elementaries, to put in the additional time and to get the later starts. And we were able to do that. And then it was like, "Hey, we don't have that additional funds, so let's back up. What can you put up to hit the two target areas?" And as George said, I can't extend, or I can't shorten the elementary day to six and extend the later start times, because the buses will never get there. I need that time in between. And to Hillary, a little bit, the reason we backed off of 6:30 was to kind of, instead of 6:30, it was 6:20, lengthening that a little bit. But we can't use it as a template and roll this out over the summer as well. I mean, I'm open to different things. I just want to commit from the committee to say, if all else fails, this is the plan we're going to go through, so I can start having this conversation with the association, that we're going to be modifying things so we can get that ball rolling before even school ends this year.
And with start times in particular, say, we contributed, you know, $200,000 with the reimbursement rate at 90%, we would be reimbursed 90% for the next fiscal year, hypothetically, right?
Hypothetically, well, yes, we'll get reimbursement the next year, I don't know what it will be.
So with this particular instance, investing in start times, we would get reimbursed to whatever the reimbursement rate is for that particular fiscal year. And then my other question, as Scriven mentioned, before, like, a staggered implementation, for example, you know, if we went that route and we put, let's say, you know, $50,000 in each fiscal year, would we get reimbursed that amount for each year that we invest in the start times? Does that make sense?
Whatever we spend in transportation...
Will get reimbursed.
Will get reimbursed at the rate right now.
Okay. And then with just one last thing, you know, I appreciate everything you've done. I think it's obviously been kind of difficult. We're coming into it, we gave you the mandate or directive to align the elementary schools, and now we've kind of come back and asked you to provide a no-cost option. And I would just note to myself and to my colleagues on the committee that I think it's our role and our parameters to give a clear directive to the administration to help them in their process and what the expectation is for the start times. And I know parental input will play a huge role into that, but I just think going into it over the summer, providing a clear pathway on what our expectations are will make it easier on the administration in the long run come budget season. But, yeah, that's it.
So I have, so I, everyone from the committee has spoken on this matter. I have Dawn, Fred, and Chris waiting. However, I also know, I see Cindy from the association and Ms. Lyons eager to speak. So what is, we can go for round two, or we can let some...
Yeah, let them first.
Is everyone okay with that? Dawn, Fred, you're okay? Okay. So folks that are waiting at the mic, please come on up. Now you, Fred.
Hi, Mary Lyons again. Just a quick comment. I know people had mentioned you could pull kids together and not pick up in cul-de-sacs. I can tell you that that's already done on our route at Duval. We live in a cul-de-sac and we go all the way up. And that is done, I think, consistently through Duval, because I see kids in groups already waiting. So I don't think that would be a way to shave off time on the transportation. And just to speak to, I think, Hillary, you had mentioned what time people come home. I can tell you, we're the very first stop on our bus route to come home, and my kids get off the bus at 3:40 right now. So I don't know what time all the other kids make it, but like I said, we are the very first at 3:40.
Just one thing, just a clarification. Right now, the cul-de-sac group stop is set at .5 miles. So this would move it to .75, which would allow for an additional, and don't quote me on this, but I believe it's something like two to three additional areas for a group stop for more children at Duval. There's like three at Conley, and there's like four in Hanson. So by elongating the amount of mile, or making kids walk longer, I guess, you have less buses going in, you pick up more kids at one stop, and you can keep traveling on. That, that's, that was the thinking. So we do it, but we're going to do it more.
Cindy McAn, WHAA. I am not as eloquent as Kevin Kaffa, just so you all know. So, we had, a very wise woman sat in a committee meeting at the beginning of the year with some of the committee members and asked that this decision... some of the committee members, and asked that this decision not be thrown on the backs of the association members. And here we are. This is where we are, we are at. Two, Mrs. Byers, with all due respect, when you liken child, parents not needing childcare to an extended school day, it demoralizes our job as educators. It comes out wrong, and it's interpreted wrong. Again, you've had months to talk about this, and to ask the association to, and I've said this before, and I'm sorry for being repetitive, but to ask the association to deal with this within a matter of weeks before school is getting out is wrong. And we would have a better time selling this to the members of the association if we had that elementary uniform time. That would be a selling point for the staff. So tread carefully.
Thank you. Justin?
Justin Evans, 57 Candlewood Lane, Whitman. If I'm not mistaken, there's two Title I schools in the district?
Yes.
Whitman Middle and Duval?
Of cour-, uh, yes.
So I'd just like to ask you to consider not to put the burden of the latest end time, the most likely to miss extracurriculars on the neediest population students. So, thanks.
Understood. Okay, committee members wanna continue to weigh in on this, or are we at a point where?
I just had a follow-up.
So, hold on, I got Dawn, yeah, I got Dawn, okay, that's fine. So I got Dawn, Fred.
You got your answer. Yes, they do.
Okay. Dawn, go ahead.
So I wonder if we're missing something in this whole planning of looking at all these times, and it's our buses, right? It's, it's a transportation cost of $1,937,000. So what are we missing, right? And I feel like it's, we can't add more, because we can't get drivers, right? We have 16, we have 20 buses, we can't get more. But we're providing bus drivers and buses to non-mandated students. So I'm gonna come back to what was brought up, what I've brought up before. How, how do we correct this timing schedule and this problem with our buses? I, I think that's where maybe the solution can be. Because if we use the same number of buses for all three elementaries, but we're not busing every student, then maybe there's a solution there. And I, I believe in the past, I've asked, you know, what is the cost of just doing what we're required to, which is the non-mandated students that live two miles or more away from the school? We do get reimbursed for 1.5 miles or more, so it's, it would be wise to maximize our reimbursement. So I ask if, if that's something you'll consider. I do see this overall picture as a step in the right direction, because it does, if the intent is to provide equity, it's, it's moving in that direction, and the intent is to move high school a little later, it's in the right direction. So I would make a motion to review this no-cost option for FY '25.
Second?
'24.
So FY '25, so it's, yeah.
What do you mean, sorry, review? Like, give us more, what do you mean by review?
For it to be further reviewed for implementation in FY '25. I would make that motion. If the superintendent is asking for a recommendation to move forward on this timeline, so that we don't lose more time in, in moving ahead with the no-cost option for FY '25.
So just, I wanna make sure I have the motion right. So the motion is to review the no-cost option?
For implementation for FY '25.
Implementation for FY '25, okay.
I'll second.
And there was a second, right? Discussion on the motion.
If I may, just for first discussion, just to follow up my comment about childcare was simply from a parent point of view, not from the teachers, because I understood the teacher contract was seven hours, so they were in the building for that time already, and not impacted by change in these hours. But if, if I was a parent, and my child was at Duval, 9:15 to 3:15, and now they're 9:15 to 3:35, from that perspective, I didn't see a reason I would need to rearrange childcare in an effort to get more childcare on one end or the other. So that is the nature.
Hang on, yeah, yeah, hang on.
Of that, but I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so we have the motion. So I know we were waiting for other people to comment, but we're now on the motion, so.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, on the motion, absolutely. Chris, go ahead.
Yes, so.
Yeah, and then Fred, I'll come back to you inside.
My concern about the motion is, if we're going to push this out, and I understand you have to have, you know, to your point, Chris, you gotta set dates, you gotta meet milestones or whatever, right? But if we're gonna set this, extend this out, why are we limiting ourselves to a no-cost option? So I would say, I would not be in favor of a no-cost option as the next step. I would say, if we're gonna push it out, let's consider, you know, some of the feedback we've received, and some of the, you know, issues with this no-cost option, see what we can relieve some of those with adding some cost.
Okay. Fred, and then David, and then George.
I wanna say that I wanna see us do this the right way, and take our time to get it right. And if we're guilty of not doing enough research diligence and being able to get it done properly, in order to come up with a plan, but I thought we had shelved this back a few months ago for the interim. But the most important part, and I agree with the chairman here, that we need to get it done right in look at every single option. House Ways and Means came out today, within their budget, they're reimbursing regional transportation at 100%. That would be a game changer. However, if we utilize anything like that, I think we have to go into it with our partner towns, with the full realization that 100% may be gone in a few years, or even the following year, because you just don't know what your reimbursement rate's going to be. But maybe that's a positive direction, that they're looking to fully fund it as they're supposed to, which would be very nice. The other thing I would almost like to see us do is a full investigation on, what it would cost for us to run our own district buses, purchasing at the employees. That way there, we could have smaller buses, per se. We would have buses available for our athletics, so that they would be able to take students. That, you know, that would be something to look at, I would think.
Fred, you stole my thunder on House Ways and Means. I thought, you know, you weren't gonna release that today.
I wasn't to say a word, and then I'm hearing all the truth, because I didn't say anything else, though.
All right. David, you're up.
So just some clarification from the superintendent. I thought you were suggesting we use the no-cost option as like a base point, and then maybe over the summer, you receive parent feedback, and discussions with the school committee, we kinda follow up together, and then from there, we kinda decide on what is the best directive or mandate to go, and this is just a base point. So from my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong here, but from Ms. Byers' motion, this is only to just review it, and this isn't saying that we are going to use the no-cost option, or we're only limiting the administration to only be in favor of the no-cost option. All it's saying is, we will start here, this is our base point, and from parental feedback, and, and the information, and, and work that we put in, then we can move forward and hopefully find healthy start times, whether it's a no-cost option or not. And I wanna reiterate, if it is a cost option, there's significant reimbursement compared to other services.
What I'm looking for is, is a commitment from the committee to make modification, and go with what we present, whether it be the two separate things, if we use costs and we end up not extending the elementary day, and we, we push start times back, that will definitely have some cost, and the committee's gonna have to make a decision. So I think the commitment to say, we're going to do something for fiscal '25, school year '24, '25, is, is important for me to say, it's not just, we're just not gonna spin our wheels. And I go back to Mr. Scriven, saying, have a plan. And I think that was the original, when we talked about two months ago, and then this came up again, and we put something together, so that it would satisfy the committee going forward. And also saying what the obstacles are, and you have heard from some parents, that are not 100% behind extending the day. I haven't heard anything about the, the later time. There was a little kickback from middle or, or, you know, a little bit back and forth, because middle school still likes their schedule at 6:40 or 7:45, but there wasn't much. But you did hear from multiple parents about the extension of the day. So giving us some time to look at that, or making a commitment to do something in the next fiscal year is important.
Hillary?
Um, is this, I, I have a couple questions. So is this option, was this the only no-cost option, or the best no-cost option?
It's the best no-cost option.
Okay.
To satisfy both.
Sure, okay. And then, if we get more buses, couldn't, I think we talked about this before, couldn't that run the risk of them not being filled to 75% capacity?
Okay, so that's what, yes. So to Dawn's point and your point, this is a logistical problem. However, what we need, because we went down this very same road, probably somewhere around late December, early January. The thing is, is that we started the conversation here with, well, if we can do this, we can alleviate the length of the run. However, remember, no matter if it's with no-cost bus, non-mandated busing, or with mandated busing, we have to allocate 75% ridership. So when we talk about infusing money into this, or when we talk about staggering it, we still have to make sure that we're ensuring, because we're a regional school district receiving transportation reimbursement, that we have a 75% ridership cost. So when Dawn says this is a transportation, and then somebody smart over there said, yeah, it's like a logistical problem, like this is a logistical problem, sort of based in transportation, we just have to make sure we're aware of those things also, as we go do this dance, again, to try to hopefully figure it out for the betterment of teachers, staff, and kids.
And then I have one more. And so, to follow up on that, I think that, I mean, I don't love this option, I think there's a lot of problems, but I think that before we can really look at start times and end times, we have to look at the transportation. I think that that should be the first thing. We had, in November, we had a meeting, November 16th, where we had all of the bus ride times and all of this stuff. And so, so that was, we talked about it in November, and said, oh my God, these kids are on the bus for so long. I don't know if you can fix that, maybe if you do grouping, maybe if we, maybe if we get rid of some of the, you know, if we look at our, you know, mandated, non-mandated students. But I think that the, the hangup that, I mean, one of the hangups that I have is, if, if the bus rides stay the same, with these school times, kids at Conley aren't getting home till 3:25, kids at Duval aren't getting home till 4:10, and kids at Indian Head aren't getting home till 3:55, and that is just too late. And we talk about mental health, and we talk about socio-emotional well-being, and kids need time to, to get to their activities, whether it's sports, whether it's drama, whether it's dance, whether it's scouts, and those times don't allow that to happen. And I think Mr. Evans brought up a great point. I think Duval being a Title I school, they're totally getting really the raw end of the deal here. So I'd like to see some playing with that, and I understand that affects the union, that's impact bargaining, but if you're talking to them first, and then coming to us and saying, yes, they're on board, I think that's another thing, too. Like, we don't know, you know, so I, I think, I think looking at it, but I would like to see, to Chris's point and what I had said earlier, a plan, and like, if it's gonna cost money, what's it gonna cost? But if we can, if we can tease out the transportation issue, then maybe some cost will be alleviated? I don't know, so.
So just going back to that flip-flop of calling Duval, so when this went in, and I, the historians here, we were here, and we weren't at Conley and Duval, but I believe the goal when we made that shift was, they would revolve every two years, okay? And when we pitched it, people said, we don't want us changed, because we've already established our routine, and we've established this, and this, and this. Now, you're on that side of the tracks, so you might have been more privy to that conversation, your kids were there.
Yeah, so what happened was, was that, that was the exact same thing. So it was supposed to be for two years, and then every two years, we would go back and forth. So what happened was, there was, there were people who came out against it on either side, and then the current administration at that time, central administration, said we are not gonna change it. And since that time, that's what it has been. I mean, we're...
We're open to whatever, right?
This group and the superintendent are free to, you know, entertain that. That would fix a little bit of what we're talking about here, but that's just another piece of the puzzle.
A little history there. So just briefly, to me, the big piece here is, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of a motion that has a no-cost, and I'm not in favor of a motion just says we're gonna do something in FY '25, just for the sake of doing it. I think that's where we're at right here tonight. Give us something that we can do, okay, well, we're not really sure we like the outcome. So I would suggest that this is something that should be, yeah, there's a plan, but it's just gonna require ongoing discussion and communication with all stakeholders, whether it's the association, whether it's the school committee, whether it's parents, everyone on an ongoing basis. So I'm just, I'm not in favor of having a motion that says, well, we're gonna do something in '25, and it's not gonna cost us any money, because I think what I heard you say was, it might need to cost us some money. Or what I heard him say is, maybe it's a little bit of money over five years to get us in a better spot. So I think it just, I wish there was a way that we could just come here tonight and wave that wand, and be like, we figured it out, and it's it, but based on the fact we've had this conversation half a dozen times, it's unfortunately gonna probably take maybe half a dozen more to get to that place, but it's, it's, I, I just don't think this is a quick option. So that is the motion. Anyone else? Discussion on the motion. Okay. I'll move to a roll call vote. Fred?
No.
Steve?
No.
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 Okay, Michelle?
No.
Dawn?
Yes.
Glenn?
No.
No. David?
Yes.
Uh, Hillary?
No.
Chris?
No.
So it does not pass.
So we're status quo for schedule for next year?
Status quo for schedule for next year, but I think there's been a lot of feedback, there's a lot of people.
But I just want, there's gotta be the community to know that we're not making a change right now.
Yes. Uh, Chris, and then, hold on, Chris, and then Fred. Hold on, hold on, Fred, hold on, hold on, hold on. Chris, and then...
I just feel a little uneasy walking away, not having gained any ground here, and I will, you know, superintendent often will be asked for direction. I would like to give some direction on, you know, a, a plan to work through these issues, and, you know, I don't specifically know what that is, because I'm not privy to all the details that the superintendent is, but perhaps we could hit some time milestones, you know, dates and things that we can try to, you know, keep this from going on and going on. Maybe anybody else has some suggestions?
Hang on, all right, so, Fred, are you okay with them answering his question before we go and come over to you?
Okay.
All right, go ahead, David.
So Chair, you kinda made the suggestion earlier, that maybe we make some sort of motion, where we give the directive to the administration to work on start times in preparation for FY '25, or something along the lines of that, so that way they have flexibility to explore options and receive feedback from us and parents, but not necessarily be constrained to a no-cost or a cost option, but just look into what is best for students, and then bring it back to us. We'll evaluate it, and then obviously make a determination from there. Does something like that sound all right, like a motion along the lines of that?
When are your goals, Dawn?
I feel like...
Hold on, one quick question. When do we do your goals again?
In September.
Yeah. But we could do them prior to that, right?
Sure.
After the evaluation period? So, so maybe, right, very soon after, or early June, whenever that next meeting is, there, maybe, I'm just telling this out, that you could come up with a goal that says, this is what we're gonna do, and now we have the timeline with it, and now there's an accountability standardized at your goal. Right? So maybe that's a way to do it. Because I, I hear what you're saying, but it's like, I just feel like, what is that emotion? Like, we're gonna do something, we don't know what it is.
But it was also his goal this year, was it not?
I know, but we also had a motion in, we also had a mandate to have a plan in the fall.
But I also, but I also wanna, I'm gonna defend myself a little bit. A goal is a goal that doesn't mean it has to be fulfilled within the year.
Correct.
It's a goal to satisfy and do it the right way. I'm gonna say, we talked about this a lot. We had a start time goal, and then in October, we talked about an equity goal to add in.
Right.
I gave you some options for different things. They weren't supported, and now we're here. So I have no problem extending that goal, because a goal sometimes can't get done in a year to do it efficiently.
And teachers have two-year, two-year cycles for their goals. It's not a one-year, so.
Agreed.
So I appreciate that.
Fred, thank you for waiting patiently. Fred?
No worries. And what I was wondering, if you'd like to discuss this with the committee, because I think it's important, and at least in my mind, if the committee gives the superintendent the direction, to be able to present options not only to us, but prior to us, to have conversation with the union as to what the different options are. And, I mean, obviously, the ultimate goal would be to align our elementary. That would, you know, serve the best purpose in changing all these times. And let's investigate to see if that's possible, what the thought would be. If we have 100% reimbursement, we also, we also know there's no thought. But we have to be prepared as to what the thought may be in the future, and I think we need to do that in conjunction with our town partners. That being said, I think it's, you know, imperative that we give them the direction, and we have the answers in knowing how and we have the answers in knowing how the union may be leaning or feeling, so that we can have discussion. You know, not be able to have to put them on the spot after we voted, and work with them.
Fred, Fred basically said what I was just going to say, but I don't feel like we have a consensus as a group of what we want. I mean, I assume it's later start time for high school, same times for elementary, but not make the elementary kids get out so late. I know it can make all that happens pretty difficult, but we need to have a unified goal. That's what we should be moving, that's what we should, if we're voting on anything, it's, let's make this the goal and move on. At least we accomplish something by having a unified goal.
So on that, I was just writing down. So with, with all of this, to me, jump in, it seems like there's three issues that we're trying to solve. So aligning the elementaries, so that for PD and teacher collaboration, later start times, and then adding time to the day for the equity. So there's three separate issues. So like, maybe it would be helpful if the committee prioritized, like, you know how for the summer working groups, we do like the prioritization, like, one, two, three? Like, if we prioritize and said, you know what? We want you to provide us maybe, so again, if we're going, if we do like a three-year plan, maybe year one, we try to solve for this first priority. And then year two, we've already solved for this, now we try to solve for the second priority. I know nothing about buses and things like that, so if it's completely not approachable. But I just think, like, we're trying to eat an elephant in one sitting, and that's not going to work. And so maybe that's an approach we can take? I don't, I agree. I think making a motion to say we're going to do something, but giving you a directive to say, give us a plan, but not prioritizing what we want to see, isn't necessarily super helpful to you either.
Chris?
I think that's an interesting point. The only caution that comes to my mind is, some of these things are intertwined. That's hard to tease them out and tease one over the other. So we could prioritize the three, we could do that, and you could consider that when you're formulating your plan. I don't see why we couldn't do that. And I like Glenn's point of having something to choose for.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. So I like the, I think you said later align and equity, was that?
Uh huh.
Okay. So the only thing I'd kind of wrap into that would be, and then transportation logistics, like, looking at, are the things we can do, whether it's, you know, looking at the bus routes or whatever, like, but to me, like, I don't, I'm right with Chris, like, I don't know how the heck you prioritize one over the other. But you may prioritize one, but it may adversely impact two. So it's almost like, I don't know, coming up with some sort of plan that addresses our transportation logistics, as well as later start times, aligning the start times, and doing it in an equitable fashion, and doing that in a short period of time, that could be it, just building off of what everyone's saying. So again, I'm not sure we need a motion. You might come back with a goal. You could literally come back with a goal next meeting and says, I want to, here's what I'm going to give you, and you guys can think about how that works. Does that work?
That's fine.
Yeah.
But we don't want to lose sight of what you said. Like, you're going to have coffee, and you're going to meet with the parents, you're going to get lots of feedback about that because.
Part of the timeline.
Right, part of the time. Because we did get a letter from the head of the Hanson PTO with lots of interesting concerns about extending the day isn't always the greatest thing for some of these elementary students. And we can't just assume that there's this blanket, you know, solution for students. Having more time in the classroom is not always the best solution. So I don't want to lose sight of that, that it just, because everybody wants equity, some of these kids might not need that. There's, there's, these letters resonated with me, so that's an important factor.
Yeah, and maybe just to clarify to Glenn's point, because we're trying to make some clarification, what are your, what are the committee's thoughts on later start times outside of the high school? Like, have you heard or felt a strong, I mean, so I, clearly, the high school has been a clear.
Just high school.
Just high school.
Is everyone kind of hearing the same, Chris?
I've been hearing high school and middle school.
High school, oh, so maybe high school and middle school, right? Because I feel like we kind of fell into the trap of like, well, we wanted, we all probably felt good about moving to high school, but then the problem was, we had to move everything else. But we didn't really want to move everything else, we just had to. So, okay, so maybe that helps, right? Where, I don't know if those are the two. Because I think the outcome of that conversation is that, hey, we want to move back our elementary school start times. And I don't think any of us, anyone wants that. It was just the output of, well, if we're going to do this without a cost, then we're going to end up later. So.
Chris, can I just clarify my comments?
Yeah, yeah.
What I'm hearing isn't based on anecdotes, it's science. So the science has been pretty clear that it affects high school and middle school, well, still, or, you know, whatever, so.
That's correct. Absolutely. Okay. Does that give you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
I feel good. Okay.
Let's go.
All right.
Really want to go to budget now? So, so all business, I mean, if you want to start.
So, yeah, so I'll tee it up, and then I think Jeff has some information to present in terms of what some things would look like, because he and I talked about this, right? So I think you all saw, or received a letter from the select board and selectmen in terms of not supporting the budget that we had previously put together. I would really encourage the committee tonight to try to, as best we can, avoid the back and forth and the, you know, they did this, we did that, as best we can. We are where we are, right? And I think personally, when I take a step back, it's a money issue, right? It's, it's, if, if we have, we talked about this several times, right, in budget segment of fall, we have a 3% budget increase. It's going to translate to roughly a 6% assessment. If we have a 6% assessment increase for both towns, it is almost impossible to do that within the levy limit without impacting everyone else. So the question becomes, do we want to stay within the levy limit, or do we need to talk about an override, right? That's the question. But if we're trying to stay within the levy limit, it's impossible to fund the schools and the, and the town departments with, you know, a 3% budget increase. It just seems, it seems that way. Because like, if we all want a 3% budget, then that becomes really hard. So I think that, to me, is the challenge, and we can discuss that. And I'm not saying you have to agree. But what I would propose is, I think, if we go down the path we're going, we're going to get to town meeting, and it's going to be a lose-lose, right? Either the schools are going to potentially win, and there's going to be a whole bunch of challenges for the towns, or the towns, departments are going to win, and there's going to be a whole bunch of challenges to schools. And personally, and again, it's up to the committee, like, I don't like that option. I, I'm not interested, hey, look at, we did great, and this is happening. We all live in these communities. So again, what I would suggest to this committee, I think we need to have some conversation and unpack some of this, and certainly here for everyone, but what I would suggest is we reach out to both boards, and we have a joint meeting with the boards of select. We invite them to a meeting. We have a tri-party public meeting. Everyone's here. We all, we all share what we have. We're all here. Hang on, Chris, I don't, we're all here, we all share what we have, and we have a conversation about where we want to go. And at the end of that, then we hopefully come to a consensus of what we're all collectively presenting at town meeting. If not, then we go down this other path of, you know, I'm not sure where it goes. I think it's something we could do. Again, I think we checked preliminarily, because we talked about this. You know, it could be a posted public meeting, we could have the school committee here. We'll all come together, and then if we need to take a break and just talk amongst ourselves, the school committee can hang out in this corner, Whitman can hang out in that corner, Hanson can, we can all have public meetings, and then hopefully, at the conclusion of that night, have something that we feel good about. Because right now, I don't think we do. So that's kind of where I wanted to tee it up. But before we do that, I would like to yield a little bit of the time to the superintendent, because he did take some time to look at, well, if we were to go with these numbers, what would that look like? Because I think that's been a question. So if you don't mind, can we do that?
Can I just get aligned?
If, yes. But if you get aligned, if you get aligned, then everyone's going to get aligned. So you're good with that?
Absolutely. That's how it works.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so we all received the letter, I assume. We read it. So just for the public, we did get a letter from both boards of selectmen, saying that they unanimously did not want to support the budget as affirmed. But mentioned potentially having a conversation with the committee, and maybe the administrators or the town administrators to try to work out something so that it wouldn't break the backs of both towns. So we, I put together this today with John. Instead of a, you know, spreadsheet that people are trying to follow, this is kind of broken down into a Google Doc. So our budget deficit right now, Whitman has affirmed in their budget, and again, I just want to say thank you to Mary Beth and to Lisa. They both provided us budgets or numbers for us to work on. They're in your, in your, in your drive. And I think I'm working well with both of those TAs, which is, is a good thing. Not that it didn't work well before, but this is an opportunity of something new. Whitman has affirmed in their budget, and the town administrator supports a 5% increase of the assessment to our school, or to our district, which equals a Hanson assessment of 4.22%. On the flip side, Hanson has said they can afford a 3.75% assessment, which equals a Whitman assessment of 4.41. Okay? So they're not meeting, that doesn't work here. So I think the committee has to make a decision. Do you go with column, the left column or the right column, as I lay this out, or somewhere in the middle? So at a 5%.
Or neither.
Or neither. Correct. You've already affirmed an assessment. So I, you know, I would be remiss to not say, we already have an assessment that we sent to the towns. If we look at a 5% increase of our assessment from Whitman, it leaves us at a $917,000 deficit. If we look at the 3.75% that Hanson can afford, or has told us, it's a $1,080,000 deficit. The numbers that I put next to there, next, and George, if you want to pass those out to the gallery, you can, you can do that. The numbers I put next to that, I look at a teacher as an FTE at 67.5, and a para at 22,000. If we were to just say, okay, we're going to cut the budget as is tonight, I would need a reduction, and I would be looking at between 16, or 13 and 17 professional staff. And I don't know if it's going to be teachers, I don't know if it's going to be parents, I don't know if it's going to be central office, I don't know if it's going to be operations and maintenance. It's too hard for me to tell you that. It's not fair for me to make that decision. And I don't want to say that we're going to cut 13 teachers tonight, because tomorrow, I'm going to get backlash from my teachers' association. Because I don't want to put forth stress if we don't have that yet. But I want you folks to look at that, and what that really means to today, if we don't make modifications. And this is as I laid out, and I'm making recommendations as we go. My first cut, if we were to do anything, would be the robotics program and the foreign language program. Okay? That was something we talked about last September. If we, you know, for some folks out there who said, you know, it's news, it's something we talked about over the summer, George made a pitch for it. In fact, I remember Mr. Small saying, can we do that in September? At least put that robotics program in. So I would look at removing that from the FY '24 budget, which would leave us a deficit of $763,500 in Whitman, and a $926,000 deficit, 500, 926,500 in Hanson. And that is, we're not losing any staff. I'm not making any cuts.
Just a clarification question. So when you say it's a 763 in Whitman and a 926 and a half in Hanson, is that, is that based upon Whitman scenario of 5%?
Yes, correct.
So just to clarify.
I'm not clear on that.
Yeah.
So, so the 700, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, so on the left side, if you look at the columns on the left side, is looking at the Whitman assessment at 5%.
So the Whitman assessment of, Whitman is seven?
So like, you're prioritizing.
Throw a line like through the middle.
So like, these two columns are prioritizing. So on the one side, it's 5% for Whitman. You just have the Hanson there, because that's what their assessment would be increased.
Well, this is what both towns have told us. Hanson can afford 3.75, Whitman can afford 5.
Right.
And it doesn't equate. A Whitman 5% equals a Hanson 4.2%.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So.
No, no, that's what I was, yeah.
So yes, that's exactly.
I'm on the right page.
So I'm kind of going down.
Yep. So, but that, just cutting those two things, we still have.
You have a deficit.
We have people who are going to be cut.
That's a deficit. So that's as I go down. If you look at that, if we make those cuts right off the top, 763.5 Whitman, going at the 5%, 926.5 for Hanson, that equates to the 11 through 15 FTEs, less than the top, or 14 to 18. Okay? The next line basically says, currently, we have 1.71804 in E&amp;D, using 650,000 for tech that we talked about already, which makes it an available E&amp;D of 1,068,004. I am making a recommendation. I don't love using E&amp;D, but I also don't want to cut staff. We talked about the week before vacation. I think we have, we are, Georgia and Nikki showed data that we're moving forward, for the first time in a long time, that this district is moving forward academically for our kids. And I would hate to lose that momentum by cutting staff. And we talked about collaboration. Mr. Lamontina mentioned it in his letter. So I talk about potentially giving the school committee an option to use $400,000 to $500,000 in one-time money, as a sign of good partnership and compromise, with the expectation, expectation that both towns may be able to compromise as well. If we use $400,000 going from that left to right column, we use 400,000, our deficit would be 363,000, or 5 to 9 FTEs. Using 400 on the right side, deficit's 526. 600, that's 8 to 12. Now, I broke it down, and again, sign of compromise. And I know Mr. Galvin had mentioned using E&amp;D. I appreciate that, that common recommendation. However, I'm very uncomfortable breaking our bank, or all of our emergency funding, when I'm not sure that's happening in the communities. And it may be, but I don't know. So I'm making a speculation. That would leave a compromise on the town of Whitman. Whitman's a 61.06% of the, of the breakdown. That would leave a bill, if I could do it, if we get it, if I could get it my way, a bill to Whitman at 221,648, and to Hanson, an additional bill of 141,352. Moving over to the right, the deficit is 526. The Whitman deficit, or the Whitman contribution to make up that deficit is 321,542. Hanson is 205,058. If we use 500,000 of E&amp;D, our deficit is 263. On the Whitman side, on the Hanson side, it's 426.6. That's where our FTEs would be, again, 3 to 8, or 6 to 10. The Whitman, they'd have to go over that assessment of 160,588. Hanson would have to go over that 4.22 assessment to a number of 102,412. On the Hanson side, again, if they'd have to go over that 3.75 assessment, Whitman would have to do 260,482, and Hanson would have to contribute another 166,118. Leaving our E&amp;D total for FY '25, if we use 400, a 668,004. If we use 5, 558,004. This prohibits us from pink-slipping anybody. We don't lose any staff if, and again, I know Chris mentioned a joint meeting. What I would ask as well is, give me the opportunity, as Mr. Lamontina said in his letter, to meet with the town administrators. If the school committee did approve this and lowered the assessment by $600,000 tonight, or $500,000 tonight, in an effort of good faith to help the towns out, because I know it's been challenging for them. Maybe I could meet with the TAs and present this to them, and see if they have it within their budgets for some flexibility, so we don't go into town meeting with fighting, and we have compromised. I do not want to get in the habit of using E&amp;D. However, I am cautiously optimistic, due to the fact of the old harmless money going away, and an opportunity to have more Chapter 70 money. But I am warning everybody of the fiscal cliff next year, of the staff members that are still in S or 3, predominantly paraprofessionals and six full-time employees, that we're going to have to try to acquaint for next year in the budget. And if not, we're going to have to make some really hard choices. And I can't stress the fact that our students are making gains because of the interventions we've put in place post-COVID, K to 12, that's working, MTSS is working, and I would hate to regress from that. I also am cautioning folks, I don't want to create a false narrative or false panic within my staff right now, because I did share with the staff that the selectmen did not affirm our budget, and we would be talking about this. They were very happy that the school committee affirmed the budget right out of the gate. However, there is a little nervous anxiety there, especially amongst my teachers that are first and second year, that might be cut if we end up going down this road. So that's what I have as a recommendation. Those are real numbers, as we have right now. And the committee, again, has to, if we are modifying the assessment tonight, there has to be a motion, and a modification, and a vote. But these are recommendations.
So maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see anything on the agenda tonight about voting.
Nope, no, there's not.
It's just budget discussion. So I would suggest we can't do that. You cannot lower the assessment since it's not on the agenda, right? So I think.
I think we can.
I think, I think you can, because it's a budget conversation.
It's a budget conversation.
Oh, then maybe, maybe, then maybe we can. I don't know. Our past practice has been that we always put things that we're quoting, but then it says discussion, it doesn't say anything about voting, but it is what it is. So it is what it is. To me, again, it's kind of like transportation. If we're going to do this and do this, like, if we're not all in the same room doing it together, we don't know what's being planned. I think what I appreciate, just to, there was a lot of numbers you just threw out, to take a step back, if the budgets that we received from the two towns, in terms of what they're thinking, were to go forward, we're talking about 11 to 18 full-time positions, the elimination of foreign language and robotics that was involved. That's what, that is definitive.
Correct.
Right? And I think, again, to me, what's missing. Right? And I think, again, to me, what's missing here is, there's been a lot of conversations that I, as I listen to some of these town meetings, that this is exactly what they didn't want to do within the towns. So maybe it's my optimism, but I'm not sure they support us doing this. To me, it's getting in the same room. I'm not excited about saying like, well, we're going to cut here and send it back and go back and forth. But again, if the, if the will committees otherwise, we'll go from there. So I got Chris waiting patiently.
No, I was first.
Oh, you were waiting before, but okay.
I asked, I could have asked.
Okay, Beth, Beth, David and Chris and Fred.
Okay.
We're going to get to everyone.
I guess I'm getting a little confused, Chris, on what you were saying, but what I, I would, you know, I don't have a problem with this is a compromise here and like, they need to compromise too. I mean, that's my point. So I wouldn't have a problem with Jeff saying, you know, if we agreed to this, to him to discuss with them, then if there's a problem, then I think we should have a big, huge group meeting with them. I have a problem with what's, could happen on the town hall floor if we don't do something. And, and I know this is hard. I have a problem keeping, digging into our E and D because we have, we did a favor by doing all the technology in and we spared the towns that amount of money, $600,000. And we're digging in there and digging in again. But when I saw what the cuts could be, when I was looking at the, both from, from the two towns and saw what their recommendation was and realized what the impact could be, I think, you know, that's devastating. And we, that's going back and again, in the years that we had where, you know, every year people got pink slipped and never knew if they were coming back. I, I don't like doing this, but I would, I would support the, taking the 500,000. I think that shows tremendous good faith on our part, tremendous. I don't know what else you could do to alleviate that other than saying, no, we're going by it and if it, if it loses, it loses and whatever. And I, I just don't like pitting everybody against each other. And I have a problem with that. And if we could do something to help the towns at this point in time, but they need to also help. And that would be that last scenario. They would have to also agree with. I would go with the Whitman side of the 5% that they could do and 4.22 to Hanson, rather than the Hanson side saying that they can only do 3.75. Because that's still tremendous devastation to our staff, I think here. So I'm just giving my opinion, but if there was a motion, then, you know, I would be supportive of that, even though I'm not real happy about it. But just to keep from having a big blowout in the towns and having to put our staff on notice at this point, I think is, it's going back to the old days again. And we haven't had to do that for a while. And I really have a problem with doing that again. I'm done.
Chris?
I'm going to go.
So I just, I have a comment, a question, and I, I just wanted to clarify Beth's position on this. Are you including, eliminating the?
Yeah, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would be very much in favor of getting all three partners together in a room and to work through this. I think that should have happened already. I think we could have avoided this, all this anxiety around both communities if we had a willingness to engage and a commitment to engage early on, early on in the process. And my question is, could maybe John or someone speak to the impact of our bond rating as it relates to E and D? And, you know, how to speak to that better than I could ask, honestly.
Good. Yep, please. You're here, John. You might as well come up.
Yeah, I gotta say something.
Shame, he came to the party.
As far as bond rating is concerned, we were downgraded, I think it was two, two years ago or three years ago.
July of 2020.
So almost three years ago. Thank you. And it was, one of the reasons was because of a lack of reserves and E and D is our, is the district's reserve. So cutting into that is not a good thing when it comes to, to, you know, getting a bond rating. Will that harm it or hurt it? I don't know. We would have, we'd have to have standing in pores of Moody's come out and actually have it done. We will have it done when it comes time to, if the, you know, Whitman Middle School project does pass, we're going to have a bond rating done then. But I can't tell you what the exact impact will be, but it's not a good thing when reserves go down.
Is there a recommended level, John? I think I've heard that in the past.
They have parameters. They've, I haven't seen them in a long time, but they, they do say they like to see things between this range. I don't remember off the top of my head, but they will give them out.
Yeah.
So if that was something that I could call someone at Moody's and say.
Yeah, I'd be for the discussion, I think. I knew it was down. I didn't know, you know, what the recommendation was. Thank you.
Okay. I will say that, just to piggyback, John and I spoke about that specifically a little bit today. And again, as the superintendent, I, for the, I'm not sure what the bond rating's going to be in two years. And I'm concerned about my staff now.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's what I have right now. So we had this conversation and he goes, but it could be two years from now and you don't know where E and D is going to be in two years. I don't think it's going to be at 1.7, but it could be higher. In 2020, and I'm not, you brought, you weren't here, but I know our E and D was probably right around the 5 or 600 in 2020. You know, if I, if I recall that. So.
David and then Fred and then Steve and then John.
Yeah, so this document right here, it says a sign of good partnership and compromise with the expectation that both towns can compromise as well. And while I don't disagree with that sentiment, I will point out, you know, in 2019, back when I was still in high school, we cut 19.2 jobs. I believe that was over a million dollars in reduction. In 2020, we did the hybrid model, which was to the benefit of the town of Hanson, to give them a compromise and give a break there, when really we could have gone forward with the statutory method. In 2021, we cut our budget by three quarters of a million dollars and took those mental health services, the same services that we're going to need to figure out how to fund next year into Essar to give the towns a break as a compromise. And then in 2022, as a budget subcommittee, we worked with John Stambrook to use the mileage methodology, which gave the towns over $400,000 of relief right there. So in terms of compromise, we've done that. And then I like to point out, you know, what other departments have faced cuts in recent years. And with E and D, you know, the reason why E and D is higher than in years past is because of Essar. We've been using that to supplant the budget, just like we were using E and D in years past. At what point do we actually start practicing best practices and prioritize the operating budget instead of kicking the can down the road? That's now the recommendation here. We kicked the can down the road in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022. At what point do we start acting and start prioritizing our students and our staff? It's concerning to me because the things I see out in the community is kids don't have the support. There's nowhere for them to go in the community. There's nowhere for them to get the services they need. And then, you know, yesterday I was signing payroll and it dawned on me, looking over it, professional staff credit, because the staff here, you go to school to get, here, here's the example right here. How does trauma impact brain development and maturity on K through 12 education? And it dawned on me that, you know, you have kids who come from poor socioeconomic situations. They may not have that support at home and they come here to get those services and to get that help. And this gives them the opportunity to have that remediation and have that prosperity and give them the tools to succeed. But our staff can't act to the best of their ability if they don't have the tools to succeed. And every year, this seems like the same stuff. They face cuts after cuts. I hear the word compromise and I love the word, but to me, it's a buzzword for cut the budget. And I appreciate the sentiment of the selectman who came up to talk about Title I, but if we support this, the non-vote that he took to not support this budget, it would have cuts to parrots and services that those Title I schools need. So I find it a bit ironic. So, you know, I ask you folks tonight to prioritize this budget, to hold firm. And I understand how, how it's a difficult circumstances at town meeting, but I do want to point out the Madden report that Whitman uses for these 5% assessments, also recommended to use an override in fiscal year 2021, which they didn't do because they don't have the revenue. And mind you, this was before the pandemic and before record high inflation. Mind you, we're on the verge of a recession and there's correlations between recessions and the rise in drug-related deaths, particularly between young people who don't have that services. If you look back in years past, Whitman, for example, had one of the highest drug-related opioid deaths per capita in 2015. I've seen it firsthand. I've seen horrible, horrific things in this community because the kids don't have the support. So I will not turn back. And in 2019, when these pink slips went out, I remember going into the building the next day. I remember seeing teachers crying. I remember that environment. And I remember sitting before I decided to run for office and said, I will never let that happen again if I'm in that position. I will not put them back in those circumstances. So under any circumstances tonight, I will not support cutting this budget in any which way because I've seen the impact. It impacts students' lives, their opportunities, it impacts our staff. And at what point in terms of compromise, do these towns turn around and actually start supporting the schools? Because I hear a lot of talk, but when it comes time to your vote and your actions, I hear a different story. So tonight, I will support the schools, I will hold firm, and I intend to let the town, our community decide what they want to prioritize. Because historically speaking, we have cut the budget before it gets to town meeting and not given them the opportunity to decide on what they want to vote on, what they want to prioritize. There's no such thing as a school override. The people who decide the override are the board selectmen. So if they want to make that decision, that is on them, but it is not on the people on this board at all. So I leave that to them. But tonight, I'm holding firm and I'm supporting the students because I know the long-term cost, if we use E and D, is going to hurt us when we need to take out a bond for our new Whitman Middle School building project. And how are we going to sell that to the community? Well, keep in mind, federally speaking, interest rates have been going up at a record pace. And it's going to get harder to invest in capital. And it's going to get harder to, you know, invest in these long-term projects. So we need to start thinking now and we need to start building our bond rating back up because it's going to hurt the towns and the taxpayers more in the long run, which in return is going to hurt our students and teachers. So we need to think about what we've done in the past and the long-term consequences of that and not live in the vacuum of a single fiscal year like we do every year. We need to think about what we've done, the compromises we've made and the long-term impact of that. And keep in mind, as the superintendent has pointed out, we have Essar III, the grants running out next year, and we have positions we know we need to keep and we're going to have to try to put that back into our budget. So are we really going to cut anywhere between 13 and 21 positions and then try to figure out how to get that back in next year and then continue with the remediation of MTSS? I mean, we really need to think about what we're doing because these impacts to our staff, to our students would be devastating. So that's where I stand. Thanks.
Fred, you're up.
Thank you. And, you know, with all due respect, we have a budget. The towns have a budget. They have a finite amount of money to work with and they have to divvy it out appropriately and properly. They can't just turn around and write a check and give us everything we want and be able to fund all town services and departments. We have to be cognizant of that. Last year, we had a selectmen and right from your end and say, what we were doing with the budget was reckless for this year. Okay? And he was accurate. This has turned out to be act reckless. Okay, we had, we knew this backlash fall that we were going to be facing a deficit. We could see it coming. We are turning around and if we take E and D, we're adding more pressure to next year. Now, the budget subcommittee, last I looked, was a $1.7 million increase to next year. If I remember correctly, I don't have the facts and figures in front of me, but it's a lot of money. It is probably unaffordable. Now you're going to add another 400 to 500,000 from E and D on top of that and knowing we do so, because that's the only place where that money is going to be coming from. So we've got to keep, you know, above that, we've got to keep that in mind. Every penny of E and D is one-time money and the one-time money will not just be able to be pulled in the operating budget. As far as the bond timing goes, and John Stambrook, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't go out to bond until after the project is built. We're going to ban until we bond, so to speak. So we do have a couple of years perhaps to get things back. Since 2021, according to a presentation we received from the superintendent, we got an over 30 position, okay, within the district. So when we talked about Essar, when Essar first came out, we made the statement, NESC had a luncheon and they were cautioning folks. And we made the statement that we have to be prepared at any decisions that are being taken through Essar, we have to be prepared to flip without them when Essar ends. So we have to be cognizant of that back and keep that in mind. I believe we need to communicate with our town partners. We need to keep open lines, we need to keep communication open. And yes, I think we're very, very late in the game right now, seeing the town meeting is only a couple of weeks away. We do have to do something, but we have to go into this with all our eyes wide open and then knowing that next year, we could be hanging ourselves completely. And we have to look at the consequences of our actions. We added, you know, 700, 800,000 dollars last year for full day case. It didn't cost us out of this year's budget, but it cost us a lot of money. And that cost pulled it in, if I'm not mistaken, and that's part of the impact. That's what I have to say. We have to be very, very careful and cognizant of what we're doing. And we also have to know that our towns have a finite amount of money.
Steve?
I absolutely agree. Thank you. With Jeff's plan and recommendation. But I'll tell you, that man in the corner, every time he speaks, that story doesn't, it never goes away. It never goes away that our students need help. I'm though going to come down and say a little bit differently. I do agree with Beth saying the half million dollars from E and D. Don't like it? I'm just saying. I want to get down to where we're not even losing anyone. Essar has been a blessing and it's the unpaved road at the end. There's just little bits left. The superintendent and the director of finance have done a wonderful job to keep us informed in what's being spent. And we knew it was a curve that really didn't have an end to it. And I said it before, I wish the state would pick up sort of a little bit of a difference to help balance. But I don't mind being, going forward and saying, let's get all the way down to that 263 deficit and split it amongst the towns as mentioned here. I just can't see any other way. I, I think next year will be a lot better in a lot of senses. Fred always gives a good business analysis. I hear that, but I think that's where I feel. I wish these two budget cuts wouldn't go away. I don't know what, Mr. Pharaoh, if he's drowling at me or not, I'm not even looking over my shoulder. But, you know, those are two things that we, we found to be very important and we put a lot of time and effort into. Just thank you.
Glenn?
And I'm going to go.
Dave, I applaud your enthusiasm. The emotional side of me wants to support you. I'm going right behind you. But the analytical side of me, which is the strongest side, and like, like Fred said, there is a finite amount of money. And we have this E and D thing, which is, what's its purpose? It's an emergency fund? Okay, so saving jobs, to me, that's, that's an emergency, you know, we need to save. And money has a singular purpose. Money has one purpose, only one purpose, that is to be spent. So this money sits in this account until it needs to be spent. This sounds like the time. This is when it should be spent. Sure, there will be consequences down the road, but the emergency is right now. And I, I know we could send this budget to the town, but they're not going to like that, you know? That town meeting will be a horror show, you know? And I don't think we'll win in the end. We'll still wind up back here making these cuts and firing people. So I support, you know, cutting the foreign language, cutting the robotics and using the 500,000.
So let me go real quick and then I get done and then go over to Hillary. So I may be in favor of doing something with one-time money, but not tonight. I mean, right? And I guess my question is, so I saw, I think within these documents, Whitman stabilization is 2.6 million.
Yes.
Did we get anything from Hanson? I know we asked.
No, but I think.
So, yes, the schools have E and D, but the towns also have stabilization.
Okay.
All right. And so, like, to me, there's, again, there's a conversation. What are we trying to do long-term? Right? I think this is where we need to communicate. Are we looking collectively because we need an override next year and, and we all agree with the services that we want to support? So Hanson stabilization 1.3 million, Whitman stabilization 2.8 million. So dwarfs our E and D fund, right? But I think if we come up with, what are we trying to do? If we say as a community, we don't want to put anything in front of the voters and we want to just live within what we have. anything in front of the voters, and we want to just live within what we have, okay, but to me, it should be equitable. Because if we're cutting from the school, then to me, we should be cutting from the towns. It's, that's, like, I think we need to come together and have that conversation. To me, doing this token, like, well, we're going to cut, and then, and by the way, we're not even doing this in a transparent public manner, right? We're going to cut, I don't know, maybe there's going to be a meeting here. I think the public needs to understand and see what's happening. Because I think there's conversations that need to be had of, there are some increases in the Hanson budget and the Whitman budget. I don't know what they are. I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. Just explain to me what they are. But there's kind of big increases here. What are they? Because if we're cutting staff, I'd like to understand what they are before we cut staff and before we reduce our one-time money that we know is going to run out. When I look at what we did in the past, I think everyone has worked as best they can to support the needs of the district. Yes, we added a whole bunch of positions through ESR. We had this thing called the pandemic. People went through a lot of crap. So yes, we tried to support them. Was that the wrong thing to do? I don't know. We did the best we could with what we have, right? And I think that's what the towns are trying to do. So, again, for me, we got to come in a room, and we got to figure this out. And if it's, hey, here's the compromise, that's fine. But to me, it should be a collective compromise. All together, we're all doing it. It's public, it's out in the open. And then we go to town meeting. Because there was a guy, Frank, right? His last meeting, Frank Malisi from Hanson, he said something along the lines of like, and I know this is hard, and I'm, like, trust me, I'm upset. Look, I'm walking away from this, because I am, amongst other things, I am frustrated with where we are as a community. I am frustrated across the board with the whole thing. How we treat each other, how we support each other, I am frustrated. So I get it. I really do. I get it. I get it. I get it. At the same time, when I hear Frank Malisi say, like, but we're counting on all of you and the other people that are in these positions to come together and figure it out, because I don't want to be sitting in a town meeting, like, who wins? Who wins? If we make a compelling argument about, let's support the schools, and are you going to feel good about driving around town with a whole bunch of positions being cut? I'm not, like, I'm not. So, like, I appreciate this conversation, but I think it's one-sided. It needs to be a full conversation with everyone, and we figure it out. And if we're going to do something, then we do it together. Or we don't, and it's going to be a really not fun town meeting. Because I don't see how, I don't see how anyone's going to walk out of that town meeting feeling good. All right.
Are they willing to do this?
I don't know. I wanted to talk to you guys first, right? Like, so, right, I know they typically meet on Tuesdays, and I don't think we can wait, because again, we're starting to talk about potentially positions, whether it's here, or there, or both. So, you know, if the committee's in favor, we can do something. We can certainly have Jeff meet with the TAs. But again, I struggle with that, because I just, I don't think that's an open process. I don't, like, I think the public needs to get the minutes of what was discussed, and who had what, what was in the budget. We just talked through it. But I think, yeah, look, I was throw, like, let's meet Tuesday. I know the select boards meet on Tuesday.
Would you like to make a motion?
Let's reach out and say, hey, will you meet with us? Let's talk about it. Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the superintendent to reach out and try to coordinate a meeting next Tuesday with both towns.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? We have, do we want to hear from a select? So, sorry, I lost track of the, where did we end up? Don was waiting, and then Hillary. So I went, and then Don, and then Hillary.
I recognize your motion. Thank you. I have a couple comments. I appreciate the patience. In regards to ESR funds, so we got this federal aid, and we had to spend it. We have to spend it by September 2024. I know other districts made decisions, public school districts, to spend one-time money as committee member Small recommended on school buses. Worcester Public Schools bought a whole fleet of buses. Why? Because they already had full-day K. And why? They already had interventions and supports. This district was in triage when COVID happened. Triage. What do the kids need? And we used that money on salaries, on staff, because we needed people. We needed people to help the kids. So we, I would have loved if we could have gotten buses, but we couldn't. So here we are, and we know that staff is valuable, and we want to keep them. In regards to Hold Harmless, we need to be very careful, because I have looked at the numbers. It's my background, looking at numbers. The most important thing is our enrollment, keeping kids in this school. The, and we benefited from this decrease of the Hold Harmless from 4.5 million down to 600,000. We did that because we, quote, added students full-day K, and we got additional bump in recognizing low-income and English-language learners. I don't know we're going to get that same large bump. What I do know right now, we have 314 graduating 12th graders. Our incoming kindergarten this year is 214. 316, 214. We're potentially going to lose 100 kids simply by graduating out and the next upcoming kindergarteners, whoever they may be. I don't think we're getting 300 kindergartners. That being said, if that happens, and we just by chance lose 100 enrollment, we're probably only going to see about a $600,000 increase in Hold Harmless, and that's just going to break us even. So that, I needed to mention that, and that's just going by the increases that have come in this past year. I will recognize that we did make a savings in the budget, Jeff. Your special ed director mentioned going outside. We ended a contract with North River Collaborative. They saw that that was expensive. We're doing everything we can to get savings. The mere fact that these two towns are in a regional school district is savings to both of them already, economies of scale. They're not having to each fund a superintendent and run payroll from their town hall for hundreds of employees. So that's a savings we never talk about. We used E and D last year, 400,000, I believe, and we paid a water bill. According to this budget document, the overall assessment increase to Whitman was 4% last year. I'm trying to digest that. If we're now shooting for five, last year it was four, and to Hanson it was 4.7. When you factor in the reduction in the non-mandated busing, it was a Whitman increase 2.5% and 3%. I'm concerned about that. Next year, we have the special ed out-of-district increase, that 14%, which we talked about. If that happens with those larger tuition bills, we'll use circuit breaker, because we do have that fund, and that's the intent of that, yes. But should those tuition bills stay that high for the following year? Can't keep dipping into circuit breaker. It's going to have to be in the operating budget. So that's another expense that will be coming. Thanks for bringing up the stabilization for both towns. In addition to the 1.3 million and 2.8, they have free cash, 1.5 Hanson, 1.9 Whitman, probably used for capital. Some of it's funding our things. I believe Hanson has a regional stabilization account, I think 187,000. Whitman has a separate capital stabilization account, another 600,000. There are stabilization accounts. It's dangerous to use 1-point, one-time funds to fund in the operating budget. The last number I want to talk about that we never have is our dropout rate. Online with Desi, we reported last year, 14 students dropped out of this high school. And before that, the year before that was 12. I don't want to lose a single kid. If we need programs to keep kids here, that's what we need to focus on. The robotics program, we absolutely need something. And if a student is already at the high school and, you know, not interested in robotics, I don't know what we can do for them, but we can start to instill a love of learning for some kids at that elementary and middle school level with something of robotics. Let's try to be known for something and give kids a path. So my last question would be, if we are using four or 500,000 in E and D, can we earmark what those one-time funds are going to spend in this budget? Because I don't want to lose a staff person. So is there discretionary supplies, maintenance, repairs that need to be put off? Can we earmark it for a certain budget line and not staff?
So anytime you cut staff, you most likely don't get them back. I have been in a district for 20 years, and anytime there's been a cut, that has not been brought back. I would call the use of this reckless, to use that term. But to Stephen and Beth's point, I don't see another choice. I am looking at the letter that we received from the Hanson Select Board, and it says, even with a 3.75% assessment, the town still has a budget deficit of $600,000. So I think getting everybody in a room together, because I also have, I have questions about that, and I have questions about a document that hasn't been updated since December 28, 2022, which is, and I, my background is not numbers, but that seems problematic to me, and I would like to have answers to understand, like you were saying, Chris. I don't, I'm not, I think it is really problematic, as a teacher, to pit departments against each other. I think that is incredibly problematic, and the only thing that's going to happen if we say, nope, this is what's going to town for, is we're pitting the departments against each other. And that is bad. It's not really worked out well for the schools in either of these two towns, in my eight years that I've lived in Hanson. I think getting everybody together, I mean, I know that that's the motion on the table. I think that's the best plan. I think that we weren't invited to the last meeting, but I think in the, in the effort, in the essence of cooperation, we put the olive branch out and say, we want to work with you. But this is, this, like you said, we had a pandemic. And I don't know, I mean, none of you were in the classroom. I'm going to tell you that, like, people are like, oh, we can't blame COVID anymore. Yes, we can. Yes, we can. We absolutely can for the things and the deficiencies that these children have. I'm telling you right now, it's not something that they're going to get out of in a year, in two years. For some of them, I mean, we don't know what their home lives were like. And to your point, they're getting their needs at school. So we're even looking at cutting 10 or six staff members, and they're going to be the staff members who are going to be working with our needier populations, perhaps. Or they're not, because they're going to be shifted, and then you're going to take staff members or programs from kids who maybe were pushing up, right? There's no way. There's no good way to look at it. I don't think this is a good idea. I think it's, we're backed into a corner, and this is what we have to do. But we need to all get together and have a conversation. Because I would like to see our other departments, like, have other departments had to come together and say, oh, we got to make these massive cuts. And I know the school budget is the biggest budget in both towns. It's the biggest budget in every town in the state of, well, maybe not cities, but it is, you know? So, I mean, that's the reality of the situation. I thank you, Jeff, for doing this. I was really anxious coming into this meeting tonight, because, and I think John brings a really good point, if we can earmark it to avoid cutting personnel, I think that that's really, really helpful. Our class sizes are good. Kids can, 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 you know, for dropout rates, if a, if a research shows that if kids can make a connection with a staff member, they're more likely to stay in a school. If you were in a class of 30 kids, you are not making a connection with that teacher, at least at the start. It's going to take you a couple months to do that. And so if we can keep things low by retaining staff and doing everything on our end to prevent cutting staff, we're going to see dropout rates dip. We're going to see progress with our students. We're already starting to see it. So I absolutely am in favor of getting everybody together, and thank you for putting this together, because it's not great, but it's, you know, a solution to a problem.
Beth, and then we do have a couple of selectmen.
So I was, you know, here whatever says, and I'm looking at this. This still, even if we did this, would still have to be a compromise by the two towns, because they still have to come up with more money so that we wouldn't have to cut those three to eight. They would have to give us this extra, and there's no saying that they're going to do that. So we would still have to have that discussion with them anyway. So it is important to have this discussion, because whether, even if we agreed to the 500,000, there still needs to be that discussion. They're going to accept that they still have to increase it by this much, because we don't know that. So, you know, that discussion, I think, is very important. And I think, you know, I did not appreciate that we were not invited to the last meeting that was held. I realize we could have gone, but it always makes a difference if you're invited, I think. And again, we're inviting the other side to hear. But I think, you know, no matter what we do, no matter if we are agreeing to take some out of the E and D, there has to be discussion, because they have to agree with that other part. And if they're going to say no to that other part, then hello, what are we going to do? You know? So we have to have a discussion anyway. It doesn't matter. Even if we said today, okay, we're going to do this, it would depend on are they going to give us that money? Because they could still say no. And then, you know, then where do we go? Oh, we're just going to cut people, and the other departments never cut anybody? Because, let's be real.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, just to real quick, that discussion is also, like, we're not done. Like, it doesn't stop. Like, we don't just, this budget doesn't, town meeting doesn't happen, and then it's like, we're gone. Like, there is next year. What, like, what does that go? So, yes, yes. Yeah, you gentlemen, thanks for coming, and thanks for waiting.
Shaun Kane, 31 Forest Street. This is a difficult discussion. I appreciate everybody coming to the table with good intentions, and I think there's been a lot of healthy discussion, and I really appreciate that. I know discussions like this can tend to turn really intense and, like, fight fire with fire, and I'm not interested in that, honestly. What I'm hoping is that we can really come to a place of understanding. We are in a difficult, I've said this before, we are in a very difficult situation. 10 years ago, the enrollment was close to 4,200. Now the enrollment's at, like, 3,200, and we have a big senior class, as you said. So we're down 1,000 students. You know, that's a significant number, you know? And to give, like, a big-picture understanding of how things came to be this way, it's very important that people hear that, that the size of the organization has shrunk significantly over the last 10 years. Slowly, our enrollment, as you said, our enrollment is such a key part of our funding, has slowly been decreasing. And it looks like we stabilized a little bit, but it might drop off again. So when you're in a, when you're in a phase like that, where enrollment is slowly decreasing, and you're in that Hold Harmless stage, how do you add services? That's, that's, that's what's so difficult, is because everything in me wants to add services. My work is to work with kids who are at risk. It's what I do all day long. You know, that's my passion. But how do you do that logistically, you know, analytically, like you said, Glenn? How do you come up with a plan that's going to allow you to do that? I would make, I would make an argument that the 5%, around the 5%, has really allowed us to make some gains over the last five years. Hasn't been easy, and has been some difficult conversations. But we're sitting in other department meetings with, with, you know, a police chief, and a fire chief, and different department heads who can have strong arguments just like this, and talking about the needs of their, of their departments. And it's very difficult for us to sit through each of them and then try to have to parse out a plan, you know? For me, over the course of the years, the 5% has become a compromise for me. And I say that because I'm someone who really does appreciate a compromise, finding, like, the best of a difficult situation, where everybody maybe is giving a little bit, but you can kind of step forward together. And for me, the 5% really represents a compromise, a true compromise. There are people, there are people who are in the know, who are advocating for other departments, that would argue that 5% isn't a compromise. It's actually too much. That if you look at the way that departments have been funded over the years, you can clearly see in a graph how the schools have got more and more funding, comparatively speaking, and they've been stable. And they haven't been able to do things like, you know, do some of the essential things they need to implement, their strategic plans, you know, and they make compelling arguments. And then obviously, sitting here, you guys are making compelling arguments. And how do you, how do you figure out where that line is drawn? At least for us, we have gone through a strategic process to try to identify where that line is drawn. 5% is not ideal. It's a terrible number to talk about for you guys tonight. But we're at, you know, we have to, we do have to post, and I think Justin's going to talk a little bit about the timeline, maybe, but we don't have much time to discuss. And I'd ask you to, I would ask you to, honestly, I would like you to come up with a decision and vote on it tonight, so that we can really go back with a, with something with our board. It's going to make it really difficult timewise for us to reason through all this. When I think, when I think simply there, we don't have the same understanding about the budget. And when we don't have the same understanding about the budget, or the same, I don't know, we don't have consensus, clearly. And we, and it seems like, you know, you guys are at one spot, and we're clearly on another spot, and just bringing people And just bringing people together to sit in a room to repeat the same arguments, it's, I don't know how productive that's going to be, you know? I appreciate the sentiment and had I known that... The reason why I gave the comments last week at the, at the selectman's meeting that we had was simply to notify, to notify you guys of the urgency of the town budgets. And it appears that we didn't do, maybe we should have been more verbal or maybe should have been more thorough about the ways that we were explaining the budget. Because it still seems like there's just clearly a separation. So we're in a tough spot.
We could have been invited to the meeting.
Excuse me?
We could have been invited to your meeting last week and we probably could have worked through some of the stuff then.
Yeah, I'm always a fan of, I'm always a fan of more of a diplomatic kind of approach. So I appreciate the feedback and I'll certainly, I personally, will certainly take that into consideration in the future. Thank you for listening.
Yeah. Can we hear from Justin and then we'll come back?
Can I just address Mr. Kane?
Sure.
Saying that we, you know, we haven't come together and so forth. As the Finance Committee Chair back in the 2000s, I had to lead with all the department heads in Whitman, aside from the district, a meeting and tell them what we have for recommendations. And I had to be put through the slicer a number of times. So to come back and hear that, Sean, it's disappointing. Because you have to sit and know you have schools and it's going to be in your mind that the next selectman next to you has a little one around the age of my grades. I mean, what do you want to do? Not have anything by the time that little one gets to pre-K or kindergarten? That the town has to be thinking about this. I think you're sounding more like it's a disconnect of not wanting to talk about it. And I don't think that's fair. We've come a long way. We've worked really hard. And we and the communities have worked really hard. Does the FinCom do that meeting anymore? I don't know. I don't know. Like I said, I've been through the slicer enough. It's very difficult to do.
Justin?
Justin Evans, 57 Candle Lake Lane. Not going to try to prolong this. I just want to give you guys kind of the timeline for what we were looking at. So the selectmen in Whitman are meeting next Tuesday to vote and finalize the warrant, which will include the consolidated budget with your assessment. So the time to vote is today if you're going to change that assessment. I don't believe Hanson prints their budget in their warrant, so they might have a working document attached to it. Whitman used to do that in the past. But we have to post seven days before town meeting. That would be the following Monday. And our last selectman's meeting before that is next Tuesday. So we're down to the deadline right now. The budget that we present to town meeting has to include the assessment from the regional school district and it has to be balanced. So if it does not change, it will show cuts to departments as the budget that the FinCom will make recommendations on may include alongside in the past, we have sometimes seen a board of selectmen recommends with different numbers. But the one presented to town meeting that the moderator is going to, at least start with, is school assessment and the cuts that would follow thereafter. And last night I did say, I'm trying to work through really quickly, it would be in the ballpark of about 10 and 12 full-time positions. I think it's probably north of that because we do self-insure unemployment. So the staff, about 110, 10% of our staff is what a $560,000 deficit looks like. And we're already using about $300,000 in free cash to balance at a 5% assessment. Some of the earlier comments that might clear up.
Can I just ask you if there was a vote taken not to include us in the meeting? Or, you know, why weren't we considered to? We sat down last week and we could have worked through some of this.
The two chairs worked that out. I don't believe it came to our meeting. We were just.
That explains a lot. Thank you.
So, so the reality is, I think, the budget at town meeting floor can be changed. The budget can be changed all the way up to and including at town meeting.
You can amend a budget on the town floor.
So I think the challenge we have, right? And we have some representatives from women here tonight and you're talking about 5% and that's wonderful. We have Hanson saying we can only use 3.75%, which is 4.41. So again, like, we've got to get in the same room and figure it out. And I know everyone would appreciate, hey, let's reduce this and reduce that. But like, to me, it's half-hearted messages. And what's going to happen next year, right? Is the company going to be lectured about how this was a reckless approach to you for one-time money? Like, what are we doing, right? So I think, again, without having that conversation together, to me, it doesn't work. People want to meet Friday, we'll be Friday. They want to meet Saturday, we'll meet, well, you know, we'll figure some stuff out, right?
I'll meet Saturday.
Right, we'll figure something. But I think without doing this, to me, it's problematic. And this sequential step thing, like, I don't know. Personally, I'm not excited about taking out 500,000 from E and D if you're saying, well, Whitman's going to cut 10 or 12 positions or whatever position. Like, I don't want that. Like, I think that's what we got to figure it out. So I don't know. If you think we can meet sooner, we meet sooner. But to me, like, we all got to come in the same room and figure it out.
Need 40 hours to post.
Just that Monday is a holiday. So if you were to post now, you would be meeting Tuesday, the day we're meeting.
Which is right. Which is why I suggested Tuesday, right? And I understand you may have to have some placeholders and we may have to come together, but without it, I just, I don't know what else we're doing. I don't.
Just, I mean, just starting last year, we included the consolidated budget within the warrant that we posted. So it's going to be printed. Whatever you assess tonight and whatever that.
But we can change.
But I guess, just my point is like, you can print it and you can have a one-page handout that says, yeah, we printed this and it was going to be a disaster and we all came together and figured it out. Here's the one page that you're going to have to look over here opposed to there. Right? I mean, this is all possible. Otherwise, what is the option? Because great, we do something and then what? Tell me what you're going to do and tell me what Hanson's going to do and I'm good doing this.
Right.
Right? Like, that's, that's the problem. Because it's totally different numbers at this point, too. So I don't know. I hear you. I wish we weren't here. We're here.
I guess I actually do have one question if you'll allow me. Probably a John Stanford question. What is the current projection for transportation reimbursement in the budget right now?
85.
85? So if we fall somewhere between the governor's budget and the House budget, looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Give or take, I guess. Right. I mean, and I'll throw, Fred burst my bubble with.
1.9%, so yeah.
You know, the governor's, or the House Ways and Means is looking at 100% reimbursement and they're also looking at a $60 per student in Chapter 70 instead of a 30, would be about another 100 grand. But to say that we can count on that?
Yeah.
You know?
We recommend counting on the House budget right now.
You know, but that would be a benefit or add some relief.
Can I ask a question? Do you, so?
Chair?
Yep.
Do you get? I feel like I'm getting the sense from you and I apologize if this is from you or, because I know you're not representing everybody on your board. But is there a feeling that they don't want to meet? They're not going to want to meet with us on Tuesday to discuss this?
I...
And it's okay if you're like, I can't speak for them.
I really can't speak to it.
I'm kind of getting.
Sean would like to, like.
Yeah.
There's two.
Yeah.
Just two of you.
I just, I'm getting the sense, right? We all, we've all been to town meeting and we know. I mean, I've walked into a Hanson town meeting where they've amended the budget right then and there as we walk in. We know it's possible. So if maybe that can be communicated faster. I mean, I know that they all know that, but I just, it's not really good luck when we're like, okay, we're going to do this and you want us to vote. But to Don's point, there's still more money that you all are going to have to come up with. And are we just saying like, oh, please come up with that money? Like, I'm not comfortable with that. Because that's still a loss of position. So that would be helpful to communicate to your board and if Hanson members are watching, you know, to, willing to cooperate with us on Tuesday.
Yeah, and just to elaborate to Sean's point real quick. I'll get right to you, Fred. Like, to me, this is not a, this is not a conversation of like, you know, how did we get here? What can we do better? You guys, it's one of the action steps that we're all willing to put on the table between now and Monday, May 2nd.
First.
First. That's it. Like, that is it. Like, as soon as it starts to go, the, oh, okay, fine. You believe what you believe, right? We all, fine. But are you willing to do something or not? And if the answer is no, okay. But to me, that should also be taken into account going into public meeting or a town meeting, rather. I think the public should understand what did we do or what did we not? Because they're not going to care. They're just going to look at all of us and be like, what are you guys doing, man? Like, I don't like, I don't like the options you're giving me. That's what they're going to tell us. I think we all know that. So what time do you meet on Tuesday normally?
Uh, 7:00. I think we're posting for 6:45 for.
So.
I'd be late, but I'd make it.
We could do before or after, before.
I can't make it.
I don't know. I mean, we could post something or we can say that we're willing to meet. I think if we are, that's great. And then we can have Jeff reach out and see if there's a willingness. But if Tuesday's probably the next possible day, I don't know what else we can do. And hey, look, if you guys don't want to meet with us on Tuesday, then we can meet. And we can decide what we want to decide at that point, if anything.
Right, there's a simple solution. I just have to post better.
Right, just post a file. That may be an option, so.
There are other days in the week though, too. It doesn't have to be just Tuesday. I'm just saying, we could meet another night if they were willing. If they could do that night, if they could do another night.
Friday.
A pain to us.
How do we find out if they're willing?
The other piece is if they set the, Whitman sets that. That means it's already set. We can meet the following week as well. Because it's already printed.
Already, correct.
Right.
So there's no timeline necessary.
We will have to, the selectmen have to sign it and it will have to be printed. I imagine by next Thursday would be the time that we, so.
But what I'm saying is that if you're already doing, you know, and.
And again, I'm not.
Voting it on Tuesday.
Correct. And Justin, I know you well enough to know that you won't take this as a fresh comment. But at the end of the day, if both towns have to spend a couple thousand dollars reprinting some paper to avoid laying off people that work in both towns, like, sign me up. Like, right, like, so.
You don't really need to do that. You can amend it on the floor.
That's what I'm saying. Like, ah, so, I don't know. Maybe we just simply leave it as, hey, we'd like to meet. We'd like to meet Tuesday and we can post, we'll post. Right now, we're going to plan on posting for Tuesday. And if we hear something like, we can't do Tuesday, but we want to do whatever day, so that we can change it.
Are you guys meeting together, both towns?
No, no, no. So I think.
So we'll have to meet both towns, too?
No, the idea of potentially.
Come here, we can go there.
Both towns come here?
That would be the idea.
Okay.
We'll go, I mean, and again, it's not home field advantage. I'm just looking at this room and I'm like, there's a table over there, the table over there. We can all fit at this table, right? Or again, I think we'll go wherever people want to go. But we need to have this conversation. So I don't know how you can get a quick turnaround time. Perhaps you can just reach out to both town administrators and see if they can get the word out and if there's a willing.
But we can post our meeting.
Right. Because agendas, I'm sure, can be changed for Tuesday. No, I'm saying their agenda. So even if they post it or about to post, they could post something.
Yep.
Okay. And we do that as the next step. And if not, then we can always, again, meet together and do whatever we want to do.
I'm not available next Wednesday, Thursday. So like, Tuesday is my day, too.
Yeah, Chris.
No, but you made a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, we did motion. Rhymed the motion.
To reach out to the TAs.
To set up for our meeting for next, was it specific to Tuesday or not?
I didn't, I don't think I said specifically Tuesday correctly from wrong.
Well, let's just let me tell. It doesn't have to be. I think we're trying to give them a, hey, as soon as possible. But as soon as possible is probably Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Did anyone second it?
Yes.
Okay. Jen, did someone second it?
Somebody did.
Yes, okay, okay. Any other discussion? All right, we'll move to the roll call vote. Fred?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
So just for a point of clarification, I'm going to reach out for tomorrow to see if they can meet next Tuesday. I'm just, no, myself, I'm unavailable Wednesday, Thursday next week and I don't think Monday's a holiday and Friday is a Friday. Nobody leaves. So pushing it into the next week, the selectmen don't have a meeting. Is that Tuesday available to do a 6:30? I mean, I'm open that next week as well.
The following week. If we had to do it.
Yeah. Next available. If they say they can't meet next Tuesday, but they can meet the following week, or.
So it'd be the 25th.
That would be the 25th.